October 22nd and November 14th, 2024.
So moved?
Okay. Sorry, who, who, who made the motion? John, who seconded?
Second.
Joe, okay. I will do roll call then. If you're in favor, say aye. John?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Alisa?
Aye.
Michael? And myself, aye. Okay, so those pass. Next, we're going to approve, we have the approval of the 2025 meeting schedule. Did anyone have any conflicts that they know about? The only thing we usually try to do that I like to pay attention to is that Columbus Day weekend, sometimes we move that one.
Oh, the ninth would be the Thursday before Columbus.
Is it before Columbus?
I would think so.
Yes.
You want to borrow this just to see?
Oh, I'm sure it's fine, but I just.
Oh, he's going to pull it up on the screen.
So I think for the October meeting, we typically move it to the Thursday after Columbus Day. Does that make more sense instead of the Thursday before Columbus Day because people, a lot of people travel?
I'm okay with any change you all want to make. I just kind of put this together for, you know, so we could get something voted on.
What'd you say?
I said, I'm good either way. I mean, if I go away for Columbus Day, I usually don't wait till Friday, so whatever, whatever you guys decide.
I think in the past, we've moved it to the Thursday after, so I, and I think for me and John, don't our kids not have school on the Friday? Is that fall weekend or something?
Probably not.
Yeah.
Seems like they're never in school.
Yeah. So if, if, if nobody else has an objection, then I would prefer to move it to the Thursday after, just so if there's a chance I can get off island a day earlier, that'd be great.
No problem.
So moving October 9th to October 16th.
Yes, and I think. I think that's the only one. Did anyone know, did anyone have any?
And just a quick note, because I got a text, Board of Health is in here on the 16th at 4:00 PM, so I mean, it's way too early to tell what our agenda is going to look like, so let's just keep it for now, and I'll make note, 4:00 PM hard stop or potentially 3:30 on that day.
Okay, okay. Yeah, if it looks crazy, then we can always change it back.
Yeah, we can adjust the date as we get closer.
Yeah, okay, okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, so would someone make a motion? So you want to just leave it as the ninth then now or whatever?
No, well, I'll move it to the 16th, and I mean, it's just so far off. We, we have plenty of time to, to adjust that if need be.
All right, so would someone care to make a motion to approve the 2025 meeting schedule as drafted and amended to change the October 9th meeting to the, to October 16th?
So moved.
So John makes the motion. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Joe, okay. And a roll call vote. John?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Alisa? Michael? Okay, Lisa?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay. Before we turn to the, to old business, I'd like to take a moment to just say thank you to our longest-serving zoning board member who's having his last meeting with us today, and just really give Mr. O'Mara a heartfelt thank you for not only all of the years of service to the town and the roles that you've played on this board, but to myself personally, you've been, you know, instrumental and, and very, very helpful to me over the years in figuring out what my role should be and, and just watching you at meetings and how you take in all the information and make the decisions that you do or ask the questions that you do. You have a very thoughtful, practical, and measured way of approaching all of the information that come, all of the requests, rather, that come before us, whether it's, you know, something very, very basic or something extremely complicated and emotional for the people that are involved. So I just want to say thank you for all of the time that you have donated to the town and to the, the people of the town to, to help with all of these requests, and you will, your, your position, your presence on the board will be sorely missed, but I also look forward for you to be, to have so much fun with all your free time now.
Thank you for your kind words.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, and on that note, okay, so now we're going to turn to the first matter of, oh, actually, sorry, we're going to, this first one was asked to be continued, so this is 2524 Surfside Crossing LLC, and that one, we've continued to December 18th for its own meeting. So if I could get a motion to?
We don't need to.
Oh, we don't need to?
Yeah, I just put it on there. We already continued to that date.
Perfect, okay. And then the next one is 2824 Christina and Nicholas Amendolore, 8 Bank Street, Linda Williams presenting. Who is our, I don't have it written down here on the staff report, but who's the sitting board for this?
So that is a good question. We have Susan, Alisa, Joe, and Michael were actually the full members present, and then we had Lisa and Jim also present. So if Michael's leaving?
Yeah.
It could be the five of you, Jim, Lisa, Susan, Alisa, and Joe.
Susan, Lisa, Joe, Lisa, Joe. Did I say that right?
Susan, Alisa, Lisa, Joe, Jim.
Yeah, okay. All right, yeah, that makes sense.
John is not sitting.
No, John is not.
John's recused from this.
Okay, so where we left off on this was we sort of, we started this and ran out of time. We probably just shouldn't have even started it, but we received several letters. I think I got five opposition letters that came in this week and one from the, from the applicant. And I think, give, we have no new information received other than, that, you know, from the applicant, other than that, like, to the file, but other than that email that we got yesterday, was it? Is that yesterday?
Yeah.
Yeah, with the, with the certificate of appropriateness. I, I think, oh, and Attorney Wilson, you're presenting. I think if you could give us an overview, or if you want to just kind of start over from where we started last time, that would be great, just because it was sort of rushed.
May it please the board, Attorney Michael Wilson, on behalf of your applicants, Christina and Nicholas Amendolore. 8 Bank Street is the locus, and it is the Scotsett Old Historic. As a matter of housekeeping, Madam Chair, I would ask that Mr. O'Mara be seated for this hearing.
Well, it's, it's his last meeting, so if he, if, if it continues, I think, I think he's not sitting on this. It's his last meeting.
I'd just like the record to reflect. I've asked that.
Oh, you've asked?
Mr. O'Mara, please be seated for this hearing.
Okay. That's his.
How the chair wants to handle the request.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah, that's, that's.
I just want the record to reflect it.
Yep, okay, so the record will reflect that the applicant requested that Mr. O'Mara be present in the hearing. And Mr. O'Mara, do you wish to?
I serve at your will.
I think, I think you can, I think you can sit up here, and then we'll, we'll see where we're at.
Thank you.
Yep, we are. Okay. All right, so go ahead, Attorney Wilson. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. I would also like to introduce Attorney, I believe, on Zoom, Attorney Joseph Brodigan, if we have him zoomed in or can acknowledge he's here. I see his hand. Thank you, Joe.
What's his last?
Joe, can you hear me?
What's his last name again?
Brodigan, B-R-O-D-I-G-A-N.
Just give us a second, Michael, we're bringing them over.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, are you ready?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
With respect to the application that your applicants have before you, it's asking the board to find that the structure at 8 Bank Street pre-existed the implementation of zoning. This locus at 8 Bank Street has the structure which was there. When zoning was implemented with the five-foot setback, it is approximately 1.7 feet from the line. Section 139, 33A contemplates this scenario. It's about 2.6 square feet of the structure, and I would defer to Mr. Bracken, who's here, as well as the site plan that's in the record. And the proposal is to go up in height, excuse me, up in height less than one foot. There will be no further intrusion into the setback. There will be no increase in the ground cover within the setback. The 2.6 approximate square feet, which is triangular in description, will go up in height less than 12 inches. I would ask, based on the record that you have, the additional information presented today, that the board make a vote, and I believe the record warrants the board to make the determination that the relief your applicant is requesting will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconformity. And I base that on the common sense facts that if there is approximately 2.6 square feet of structure located within a setback, and that 2.6 feet is going to go up in height less than 12 inches, that the neighborhood, it cannot, it just cannot be determined that that's going to have a substantially detrimental impact on the neighborhood, more so than what exists now. And if the board has any questions for me, I'd be happy to entertain them. Otherwise, Mr. Nicholas Amendolore would also like to speak to the board.
Can I just ask a question? And I, I just want to reconcile the certificate of appropriateness with the current request. So can you confirm that the request has changed, right? Because there's this moving the shower, the second floor addition, the adding the dormer, is all of that still happening?
Madam Chair, are you referring to the Historic District Commission?
Yeah, the COA that was provided, the one that ends in 3625.
What is being proposed in the application before the board is to not increase the nonconforming nature of the 2.6 square feet that lies within the setback. I would defer, and I would ask Mr. Sad to prepare, in anticipation of a favorable vote, that you mirror the conditions on the draft dated May 2023, that the project shall be in compliance with the proposed condition site plan in the ZBA. With respect to your suggestion that the Historic District Commission that was contemplated in this decision as sub-A to paragraph eight, the proposed alterations and expansion shall be done in substantial conformity with the plans approved by the Nantucket Historical District Commission Certificate of Appropriateness. So your applicant's not asking to deviate in any fashion before this board from what the Historic District Commission approved?
Right.
Okay.
There's only a section of the shed roof that is within, that you need to ask relief for.
So it's a, it's a one, it's more or less a one-story structure now, and the portion that triggers the zoning and the request for relief is the, is as you point out, Ms. Botticelli, yes, the approximate 2.6 triangular square.
Southwest corner. And the. Yeah. That's going to go up about 12 inches. But I have, I do have a question, if I may, Madam Chair. I know, I think we requested updated drawings, which I think you've kind of given us, but where is the house, I mean, the means and methods of the work that's being done on the whole site, I think, is the question still because of the tightness of the site, its location. You're putting a new foundation under this, and I know it's not a full basement, but you're putting a new structural foundation under this building?
They're not, we're not increasing the footprint at any level.
No, but I mean, below it. Are you just leaving the foundation exactly the way it is?
I don't think the structure, I, I would defer to the engineers and the applicants as to the nature of the support for the wood frame.
The existing wood framing.
Is that what you're asking? There's not, there's no proposal, well, I would defer to the building department as to whether the, the structural components are acceptable, but there's no proposal for a basement, if that's what you're asking.
No, 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 but a new crawl space.
You're asking if there's going to be a new crawl space?
Are you putting a new foundation under this building, whether or not it's a basement, a crawl space, piers, whatever?
Concrete, cement's a component of concrete.
Okay, new concrete.
Alisa, Alisa, wait.
Okay, well, let me, before you answer that, I have a couple of other questions.
I'm just trying to answer, Madam Chair, if I could ask for some clarity about the question, I'm not understanding the question.
Okay, so when you have a building, you either have structure below it to support the first floor. It could either be a crawl space, it can be a full foundation with a basement, it can be piers. I'm asking for the question, are, are you, are you leaving the building exactly where it is and just raising the roof, or are you having to put new structure below the building to support it?
I've got to defer to the experts in the area of structure.
And then I have a couple other, I have a couple other questions. Oh, you want me to get that one as their first?
Should we address that question once, Madam Chair?
So, let's go to Dawn about that, but the, I'm sorry. Let's go to Mr. Bracken about that. The, why I was asking about the, the certificate appropriateness with the, with the HDC was that last meeting, there was question about the, the plans that show the window wells in, that are subterranean and the, and that Linda Williams was representing that, that the roof line was going to be lower, and that's why we were asking for the, the certificate, because it wasn't clear, so.
I could answer the window wall question. Those window wells are to put light into the first floor, so they are still.
This one?
Yeah, those are still proposed to be there. That has nothing to do with the basement.
Okay.
Which is no longer there.
Which is no longer there.
So I understand the window wall question.
Okay.
If that clarifies it, that question. But if you want to answer, Dawn, the question about the structural integrity of the existing foundation and what has to be done to that.
No, let's go.
May I add to that, Madam Chair?
Hold on, hold on. You've, there's three people talking out there, so Attorney Wilson, are you, you're done with, you're deferring to Mr. Bracken? Okay, so, okay, so just identify yourself with the tape and hold on one second. Alisa, you had a follow-up question to that?
And specifically, what's going under that little bit of added square footage that you're getting, that we're really talking about?
So, hi, board, I'm Nick Amendolore. Nicholas Amendolore, the owner of 8 Bank Street. I just have a quick handout that may help you guys out a little bit.
So, did I mispronounce your name earlier? Is it Amend? Amendolore or Amend? Amendolore, okay.
I got some extras.
He, do you have extras? Is there anyone interested in the audience who would like to see one?
So I just prepared something quick. It's about two and a half minutes, three minutes.
Okay, perfect.
Yep, so hello, members of the ZBA. I just want to take a quick minute to introduce myself and my family and briefly address some of your concerns from prior meetings. My wife and I purchased 8 Bank Street a few years ago. Within a few months of ownership, I found a job in Scotsett that I can bike to in just under four minutes, door to door. I'll be gone on my fifth year working in Scotsett soon and absolutely love it. We have 17-year-old twins, Billy and Lola, both in high school seniors, both heading off to college next fall. 8 Bank Street is our only house we own. I work here and I vote here. If you could just turn to page two. So within a month of ownership, we reached out to Mary Bergman, Executive Director of Nantucket Preservation Trust, and we went on multiple walking tours to learn about the history of our house and the little village. We connected with Betsy Tyler, Research Chair at Nantucket Historic Association, who helped uncover even more research on the historical architecture of Scotsett. Then, after many chats, we commissioned Angus MacLeod, who's a board member in Nantucket Preservation Trust, Scotsett Advisory Board, he's a current HDC member, to draft us a simplified gable with barn doors that really brings you back to the very simple, almost austere shapes that were originally in Codfish Park. Now, if I could just have one quick minute to address the issues this board has expressed about our project. First, to clarify statements made in the last meeting. The appeal of the COA is pending before Superior Court. We are awaiting a hearing on some motions and the setting of a trial date. To be clear, the Superior Court judge did not direct or request the board to take any type of action whatsoever regarding the petition that is before this board. What happens at this hearing is not before the court. The court did want to make sure that the design that was approved by the HDC was the same design and footprint we are seeking approval for today, period. I want you to know that I spent countless hours since our last meeting scrubbing, analyzing, categorizing all of your questions, concerns from all the prior meetings, YouTube videos, with attention to detail, and often watch them and re-watch them. If you could turn to page three. I have concluded that based on your comments, you really like the design of our historical replica. You have stated on multiple occasions that the alteration of the 10-foot height, of the 10-inch alter, alteration of the 10, 11-inch height on the southwest corner is not a concern, and made numerous positive comments about your satisfaction with the design, and I'm very proud of that, and thank you for your acknowledgements. It was a lot of fun researching with some of Nantucket's best historians to settle on this tiny, one and a half-story, simple dory bond design. I also concluded that you were just really concerned with the vibrations and sensitivity to Middle Gully Road and the surrounding properties. As a solution to the vibrations, we have decided not to move the house off the property. In fact, we will not move the house at all. We will then use a foundation system with the least amount of excavation to support the small addition. Dawn Bracken is here, if you have any questions. The response to the sensitivity of Middle Gully Road, I was asked you to turn to the fourth page. Middle Gully Road is our favorite Nantucket road. We think Middle Gully is an extension of our property and care for it as such. We actually adopted the Middle Gully Road from the Scotsett Civic Association and take great pride in making it beautiful. We want the entrance to Codfish Park to be even more beautiful than our old favorite hold from our previous neighborhood, Acorn Street in Beacon Hill. Finally, at the last EBA meeting, the board requested some additional documents, and in your package, you should find a signed one-bedroom deed restriction, cover sheet to your, to the COA, the select board memo to uphold the HDC approval dated February 2nd, 2022. Lastly, I was taught that nothing great comes easy and hard work pays off. I sincerely appreciate all the hard work you guys have done. And although it took some time and lots of YouTube videos, I feel we have addressed previously documented concerns. I hope the board can now focus on the tiny sliver of the pre-existing nonconforming southwest corner and make a determination that it will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood if we raise it a couple inches. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Amendolore.
So.
Just say, if you can just introduce yourself for the video.
Dawn Bracken, Bracken Engineering. As Nicholas said, in order to minimize the disruption on the site, the amount of excavation, what's going to be proposed is a shallow crawl space foundation for the addition only on the north side of the house. It would have to be three feet deep, which could be excavated by a small mini excavator with rubber tracks. And then where the second floor addition comes over the existing structure, they're willing to structurally support that from the inside, likely meaning they'll have to take some of the floor out and hand dig and pour some footings on, on the inside. Obviously, those structural plans will have to be done and submitted to the building department prior to getting a building permit. But the amount of excavation for the, for the shallow crawl space on the north side is, is away from the retaining wall adjacent to the road that's in question. It's going to be pretty, it's already level and pretty much at grade, so we wouldn't anticipate. to be pretty, it's already level and pretty much at grade, so we wouldn't anticipate any disturbance to surrounding properties of the road with, with a three-foot excavation for a crawl space footing.
Go ahead, Susan, Alisa has her hand up.
Alisa.
Hi, I just want to say that I still feel the same way and stand behind all the comments I made from the previous application and very early on in this process, and I credit you for eliminating the major deep foundation and major impact that it would have on that retaining of that pathway, and I still think it's a really cute house, and for me, you've taken away my concerns for the overall impact on abutting properties and neighbors, and, and I would be prepared to approve this today because you've obviously done your homework, and I think, I think it's in keeping with that area, and it seems like you are taking much care not to impact any of the surrounding properties.
I have some follow-up questions, Dawn.
Yep.
I'm just trying to understand, so does, in order to put that foundation in, under the new lean-to section, I assume that that's what you're referring to, the section that's the lean-to now, we'll get a new foundation, the section under the story and a half-house will be hand dug and dug under the existing house?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, but I just have a question about, so what part of this house, because it looks like in order to do the lean-to, will you be taking down part of the existing gable that's there? Is there demolition of the existing gable that's involved? That's what I'm trying to understand, because you're going, most of the two-story addition is actually going north, and then the lean-to is actually at the south where the point of the, of the plan is, and that doesn't really expand in terms of getting closer to that corner, but obviously the roof form is changing from a gable to a lean-to, so are those walls coming down?
No, I don't believe so, I think they're just getting lifted. I, I probably can't answer the questions for the architectural plans as well as Nicholas can, so I'll probably let him answer that.
Okay.
The wa, the walls are staying, the house isn't moving.
No, I understand that, but you're going to have to cut, you're going to have to remove part of that gable to put on the lean-to roof.
The top part you're talking about.
Yeah, so you'll cut those walls, existing walls down, or you're going to rip them down and rebuild them?
Well, that's something that the.
Because if you're putting the foundation.
Builders will do, but we're keeping the walls there, we're not moving those. And we're going to have to cut the roof, yes.
Yes, okay, but you're going to leave the walls there, you're going to dig under that building in place, no change in floor.
Building is not moving.
Yeah, no change in floor level.
No change in floor level.
And then in the backside, where the footprint is actually expanding to, to create the story and a half mass.
Yep.
What's going around where that's being filled in, you know, right now, there's just that little one-story thing, and you're going to, you are actually adding the two-hundred and, one hundred and seventy square feet, which are by right.
Yeah, it's a one hundred and seventy square foot addition that's going to be added.
Yeah, how do, how do, that, what's that foundation?
We're proposing, if you'll allow us, to put in a small slab, right there.
A slab on grade?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I'm just the homeowner, I.
I know, well, I'm trying to understand.
I want to do the least vibrations, like, as minimal as possible.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand the methods of construction, which I think.
We will hand dig it if you want us to use a shovel.
I just, I'm just trying to get the, understand the methods of how you're doing this.
Dawn can talk a little bit more about that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so the, the small bump out on the north is, is, is coming off as part of the expansion, so anything, any other footprint that's going to be expanded will be on the crawl space, and it will have to marry in to the existing house that's there.
Okay, so that section will be on a crawl space, not the section that's closer to the south?
Exactly, so the section that's closest to the south.
Okay, I was confused, I thought it was the section that had the actually encroachment into the setback that was going to have the crawl space, it's the opposite.
Originally, you're right, it was, and we talked about that, but that's why the owners decided not to touch it and leave it alone altogether after the reaction from the last meeting and the neighbors.
Okay, so the one hundred and seventy square foot addition will have the crawl space, the three-foot crawl space, it's furthest away from North Gully Road or B Street? Okay. I think, I mean, the only other, because I, I think we asked for updated elevations just to confirm that there was no change in floor elevation, so you've just confirmed that the building is not moving. The, in, you know, in my opinion, the infraction of what's allowed by right versus what they're asking for is de minimis, and I think it is approvable, and so I think that, you know, you've answered all my questions relative to the relief this board has given.
Okay.
I have one question.
Joe?
To Billy. I see Mr. Wilson took Linda Williams's place. I mean, do.
I'm still there, we're just, we arranged.
Oh, there you go. We just rearranged whose.
Linda, you're not recognized to speak, and you haven't introduced yourself, please don't speak from your seat.
No, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see Linda, sorry. Because I was thinking, do we need paperwork for that?
I mean, Linda, Linda was the agent for this, if Mr. Wilson's their attorney, I'm sure he can submit an email or something, I don't.
No, no, I just was wondering if that was proceeding, that's all.
And Mr. Wilson was involved in the, in the previous iteration of this.
Madam Chair, with all due respect, I was the original representative for the applicant, I defer as well to the senior HDC, to the other experts to deal with structural and aesthetics, and I'm here for the law.
Okay.
I was just making sure things were tidy, I wasn't, you know.
Thank you, sir.
Joe, did you have any other questions about the?
No, that's it.
Okay, and Alisa, I see you had your hand up.
I would like to make a motion to approve.
Hold on, we're not ready yet.
Oh, all right, I'm like, let's do this.
Okay.
I mean, come on.
So, so Joe, you have, you don't have any concerns or questions at this time?
No.
Okay. Jim, do you have any concerns or questions at this time?
No.
No, okay.
No, I don't.
And Michael, since you're sitting at the table, do you have anything to add?
I don't, I think that the applicant has bent over backwards, and I think we might be able to finish this today.
Okay, okay, so let's, let's move on to getting comments from the public, so we're going to, we can use the timer on, oh, sorry, we can use the timer, and I think, are we, did we do three minutes or two minutes? We've, select board does three, and we're doing the same, correct?
Yeah, we do three minutes for the first comment, and one minute if you have a follow-up comment.
Yeah, and so let's really try to keep to the time, and also, if you do have a follow-up comment, let's just wait our turn so we're not having crosstalk. We'll start with people in the room, and then if there's anyone online, we'll go to that second, okay? So I guess I'll start over here, if you can just introduce yourself for the video recording, and you have the mic.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, my name is John Shea, I am here to, as a representative of the Sconset Civic Association, where I am on the Board of Directors. And, look, I agree with Nicholas that Middle Gully and that view is one of the most beautiful places on the island, if not in America, and I say this as a representative of the Sconset Civic Association, and the four hundred members of the Sconset Civic Association are very concerned about this application and about the building of a structure that was a single-story building and has been for a hundred years, turning it into a two-story building that is going to forever change the three-hundred-year-old, old Sconset historical status that that structure has had. So I just want to say that what the homebuyer has done is bought a single-story building, and they want to turn it into a two-story building, and, but they're doing it in a place that is actually, this is, again, the feeling of the Sconset Civic Association, at the very heart of our village, that has been an unobstructed view for three hundred years, since Sconset was settled in the sixteen hundreds, to, from Front Street, as you'll see at the top of the map, down Middle Gully to the ocean, and so you may know that five hundred people a day walk down Front Street and pass that very spot, they photograph it, they film it, they get married walking up and down it, and like Nicholas and his wife, they love it as well. So you laid earlier, Madam Chairman, complimented Michael and thanked him for his thoughtful, measured, and practical way that issues are addressed, we're hoping that you will continue to do that in this particular thing. You know that there was a lawsuit that has been brought by the abutters against the HDC decision, which was challenged, that is yet to be decided, that the judge has come out there and done a site view of the, of the situation of the location, saw the measurements, saw everything, there were fifty people from Sconset there who didn't say a word to him as he went there, out of our concern, and so we're wondering whether or not the decision that you might make today is premature, since the decision in the court has not been reached, so that's all I have to say right now. We are concerned about an ice cream shop turning into a tower, and the question is, how high is that building going to go, and how much impact is it going to have on Sconset for the rest of our lives? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Alisa, do you have a question, or should we, I'd like to let them get through there.
I'd like to comment.
Can.
I would like to, okay, it's a question.
For Mr. Shea?
Uh, no, for the board, for you.
Okay.
So, is anything that he just talked about within the zoning board's jurisdiction?
Well, you mean as far as the, the two stories?
Anything he just talked about, did anything he just talked about have anything to do with the zoning, our, our jurisdiction over the zoning, or any zoning bylaws? It was very heartfelt, but.
That's why they're here.
But were any of those comments.
Madam Chair.
So, so, so hold on one second, so the, the HDC decides about the, the two-story part.
Right, so we don't.
Ours, that's in litigation, the, what we are deciding about is the, the corner that is.
Right, so my point is, although well said and understood, I love Nantucket too, but in my opinion, that's very heartfelt, but it is not under our jurisdiction to decide, that's not within our bylaws, and I just want to say that I don't know the relevance by stating that here.
That's a legally accurate statement. Ms. Allen, thank you.
But I respectfully disagree on that point, I just want to make.
Maybe I'm wrong.
Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on, so we do.
A subjective substantiality question about whether it's detrimental, so I'd like to hear all sides.
We do, so let's continue.
No, I want to hear it.
Yeah, so let's continue with public comments, so if you can say your name and, for the record, and then we will start the timer for you, for your three minutes, please.
Thank you, Chair McCarthy, my name is Catherine Murphy, this will take much less than three minutes. We've heard a lot of heartfelt commentary, both from Mr. Shea and Mr., I'm going to screw up the pronunciation, Amandalari. Oh, I'm sorry, I honestly feel that it's just premature and inappropriate for the applicants, the owners of Eight Bank Street, to appear before the ZBA to request the special permit. Yes, the HDC did grant the applicants a certificate of appropriate appropriateness over three years ago, in September twenty twenty-one. That certificate of appropriateness is the subject of a lawsuit pending a decision in Nantucket Superior Court. This lawsuit was brought against the applicants, the HDC, and the select board by the abutters, and it challenges the issuance of that very certificate of appropriateness. Nantucket Superior Court Judge Michael Gilde has yet to rule, and his ruling could very well annul the HDC certificate of appropriateness. I'm not a lawyer, but thinking very logically, if there is no certificate of appropriateness, how can they be here in front of the ZBA asking for anything? Given that, I respectfully ask the ZBA to deny the applicant's special permit request, and I'm praying that Margaret Van Dusen is on Zoom and can speak to this much more coherently than I just have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak? Okay, I'm going to let everyone get a chance, and then you can go back.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Identify yourself for the video.
I'm Lisa Soder, I live in Sconset, I'm a year-round resident, and I live at the top of Middle Gully Road, which is just above the construction, the Eight Bank Street construction site. Like all of my, the other residents in Sconset, we live in it, honor it, and are very protective of everything that made Sconset someplace that we want to move to. That said, we, I still have some concerns, and I, I understand that there have been some changes to the project, especially to the excavation, and, but I do, I am still concerned that the certificate of appropriateness may not be upheld, that there is a vague reference, Attorney Wilson said that the height increase was one foot, I'm not sure I understand that, because I thought it was twenty or twenty-one feet. We don't feel that we understand the scope of the project, we don't have new renderings, I don't know what, what you guys are approving, if you approve something, the height, the impact on the emergency access road, I don't know it's, is addressed, the excavation for the new slab, I don't know, I understand that that'll be dug from under, but do you have to raise the house to dig from under it? It just seems that at this point, without new renderings, without the certificate of appropriateness being solid, without the judge deciding the case, that the request for approval of ZBA is a little bit premature. I, I would hope that you could continue it until the, until the court case is decided, and until you're all able to look at the new plans that's, that have, instead of piecemeal, piecemeal parts of it, looking at the whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Alger.
Thank you, Sarah Alger, I represent Willamina Austin, who is an abutter to this project. First of all, I don't think you should grant this relief, because I think based upon the testimony of the neighborhood, it is substantially, it will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's existing. I know that you're probably poised to grant it, based on the comments that you've made, but I also want to say, at a minimum, you should be continuing this another month, because they've submitted materials that people haven't had an opportunity to fully review, I don't know that you've had a chance to fully review them, there was a reference to a one-bedroom deed restriction, I haven't seen, I haven't seen that yet, they keep saying that they're going to restrict it to one bedroom, but there's nothing on record at the registry to do that yet. It's a significant project, and we're just today hearing construction details that aren't completely clear in my mind exactly how the slab foundation is being done, I, I agree with a lot of what Ms. Soder said, but if you are going to grant this, which I kind of think you are, you should be really careful with the restrictions that you put in the decision, I, because I think that's going to be critical going forward. First and foremost, there should be the one-bedroom restriction, that's how they've represented it at every board that they've been at, you have the ability to impose conditions as part of your relief to ensure that this isn't substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's existing, and that would be one of the appropriate restrictions. Restricted work hours, time of, time of day maybe beyond what's in the bylaw, given that you are in the heart of Sconset, but, but really, the seasonal restrictions that I know that you've placed on most special permit relief should be part of this decision if you were to grant it. And I think construction methodology is another important restriction, that they adhere to the construction methodology that they've set forth, it's not entirely clear to me what that is, but if they're making representations to the board as to how they're going to be doing this construction, that should be a condition of your grant of relief. And I think that's probably all that, all that I can say. And I think that's probably all that I can say about that. Thank you. Oh, you should also, of course, condition relief on it being built in accordance with whatever certificate of appropriateness you've seen and that has been submitted as part of the application. They shouldn't be able to switch in and out buildings. It should be what you've, you should be approving what you've been shown.
I have a question or a comment on the...
I do too. So you go first, and then I'll go.
Well, I think that, I think, you know, we don't really have a, do we have a certificate of appropriateness if it's in front of a judge to...
Well, right, so I would say that we would condition it on certificate of appropriateness 2021-053625, and if there's any changes or deviation from that. But at the same time, that, the plans that were with that certificate of appropriateness show the basement, right, and other things that are no longer there. So I have the same questions. Like I have, you know, notes here, like, what is the actual elevation height? Because last meeting, we started talking about that with Linda, and remember she was like, oh, it's this, it's that. It was like changing all over the place. So like, it seems, it becomes more drawn out, more confusing when information isn't clear. This seems like it should be a pretty clear, you know, it's either they're building this or they're building that.
Well, and I think having the construction methodology in a set of drawings to put into the file makes sense. And I don't frankly understand why, if this, separate from what Ms. Williams suggested last time, that the judge needed this, why does it have to happen now? Why can't we continue it and see what happens with the judge?
Right, so I have a note...
And get more information, like, you know, foundation drawings that show X. This is the floor slab, it's not changing, you know, some of this information, and...
Is it, it was, I haven't...
Just to make the file clean.
Yeah, no, I agree. I mean, I have my notes from last month show that the judge was, there were summer judgment motions that were being reviewed.
I thought he wanted us to make a motion before he did his motion.
That's what we were told, but I don't think that's, that doesn't seem like that's the case anymore.
Excuse me?
So, all right, hold on, hold on, hold on. We're still not done with public comment. So is there anyone, does anyone have their hand up online to speak?
We have two people online waiting to speak.
Okay, let's hear the two people online.
My hand has been up since before this whole conversation.
I know, I know, but I want to get through public comment, especially the people that didn't get to speak last time. So tell me what you want to say.
I just want to be clear that before, when I was motioning to go towards an approval, if I was able to finish, I was going to say, as we do a lot with approvals, to add all of the conditions and everything that we are talking about as far as restrictions or restrictions or, you know, like what Sarah mentioned, you know, times and dates of construction and all that good stuff. Foundation and what parts getting the three-foot crawl space, what spot, the new corner that we have jurisdiction over gets a slab, you know, we usually make a lot. And then, don't we usually draft the approval with all of those conditions? And is that how we usually do it?
I mean, with this one, we had a draft decision that we did before, but let's first, thank you, yeah, that's what I'm looking at, yeah. Yeah, let's...
They're asking the board to adopt that.
What was that?
They're asking the board to adopt what, you draft what...
And one last part to what I was just saying is...
I think it's already in our packet.
One last, the last part of what I was just saying is, I don't feel, you know, with all different boards' approvals on Nantucket, as we know, there's HDC, there's CONCON, there's all kinds of different, every board can approve at the exact same time on a project. And for what, again, is within our jurisdiction, I don't think has much to do with the, whatever lawsuit or appeal is going on. I'm suggesting that we approved today with all sorts of restrictions and notes what is within our jurisdiction. And I don't think that any of the HDC stuff has to do with what we are deciding upon. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so if you can let in whoever, the first of the two online, that'd be great.
And I just wanted to say that there's actually three people now.
Oh, okay. So let's just go in order as best we can of how their hands are up.
It's Joseph Arve, 11th Front Street. I live above the Eight Bank Street in question here. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I've been following this from the very beginning, and simply put, we had a design of the house and plans that we were made aware of, and it clearly, to any type of logical thinking, was a demolition. Now, suddenly, it's not a demolition, and I think there's a fair amount of confusion here. And if it is demolition, which has been clear all along, is there any demolition permit?
Linda, please stop mumbling in the audience. If you want to get up, like, put your hand up and come to the microphone, fine, but please stop that. Okay, sir, were you done with your comment, or did you have more to say?
I'm done.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Thank you. Let the next one in.
The next person is Margaret Van Dusen.
Hi, this is Margaret Van Dusen. My sisters and I are the trustees of 7th Front Street. And the comments you've received well in advance of this meeting are from many of the owners of the most historic houses in Sconset, the Gardner House, Old Langzein, Dexioma, Mizantop, House of Lords. And everyone who's commented on this, including the Sconset Civic Association, recognizes the importance of Eight Bank Street in relation to its setting in the Sconset Old Historic District. And even though we're talking about part of the roof line, it sounds like, on the first floor, I don't think that the board can or needs to look at this in a vacuum. It's involving the second floor, a second floor that, in the drawings you have in front of you, are 20 feet tall, so more than double the height of the existing building. The COA, which is also problematic, that was filed in the clerk's office, authorizes a 21-foot-tall building with skylights and a porch. And over the time that this owner has come in and changed the application over time, the COA doesn't even really match what is now being proposed. I, like Sarah Alger, believe that handing in, I don't know how many pages Mr. Amande Lory's hand up was today, but I certainly think that those of us who are on Zoom should have an opportunity to look at it and respond to it before you make a decision on this case. And I guess I'd say, you know, this would be the first building allowed to be taller than the bank in the Sconset Old Historic District. It will be visible from three directions, from Front Street, and it will loom over Middle Gully, including with a bathroom, nine-foot-wide dormer. And I think you ought to consider continuing this until, one, we can look at what has now been handed up today as new information, where there is not going to be supposedly any excavation going on underneath it. But I also think you should be asking them for the construction plans, because those apparently exist and, for whatever reason, haven't been produced. And I guess the last thing I want to say, it wasn't like the judge said to them, oh, you need to do X, Y, or Z. This, you know, there was a lengthy bench conference, but then three motions or summary judgment were argued and taken under advisement, and the docket reflects that. So I just ask you to either continue this or deny the special permit today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And is that it for online?
We have one more person. We have Linda Del Vecchio.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you.
My name is Linda Del Vecchio Gilbert, and I and my husband are the homeowners of 11th Beach Street in Codfish Park. We have owned since 2020, and Mr. and Mrs. Amande Lory purchased their home roughly the same time we did. And I have seen the plans, I have seen the plans since this couple has extensively changed the plans, modified the plans to appease community members. And I have to say honestly, I didn't have anything prepared. I just wanted to come here and hear what goes on, because I'm appalled. I'm appalled at how long this has been going on. And Ms. Allen, I have to praise you and commend you for, I don't want to say advocating, but speaking up and advocating as a board member to get this passed. We hear these emotional talks. I see it on social media, I see the emails, and I'm embarrassed to be a community member of Sconset right at this point, which, with how the community has been treating this couple, who is only trying to change something that is going to be more beautiful. And I don't understand, I would love to ask every person in this room right now, how many changes, how many alterations, how many modifications have you done on your homes? And I bet most people have, including people on Front Street. And I don't see anyone ever speaking up regarding actual being homeowners in Codfish Park. It's everyone up above. But no one has questioned North Gully, the big, huge foundation that is breaking right into that bank. It's this project for Mr. and Mrs. Amande Lory that it's terrible that they're going through this. I support this. Again, Ms. Allen, thank you. I just don't understand, as you said, Ms. Allen, what is being discussed by Ms. Van Dusen and Mr. Shea? It's about looks. It's about being taller. If you looked at my little tiny house right now at 11th Beach Street, it's that tiny one that people think is someone's garage. And our neighbors on the left built a monstrous structure, which, it towers over our house. The cabana next to us does the same. It's 2024, we have changed. It's supposed to be changed. And it's sad that they think mid-gully, middle gully, is the only place to take photos and to have wedding pictures taken. There's a whole other 11-mile island that we, that is beautiful. So all I can say is, I hope this is passed today, because this has gone on way too long, and life is way too short to continue this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Okay, I'm going to let the homeowner, you have one minute.
Yep. Starting now.
Let's see how you do with one minute.
It should be pretty quick.
Yeah, okay.
I just want to say that I apologize for the late submissions, but I did, in all my research that I did on all these YouTube videos, the other party has submitted on the same date of the meetings, new information such as the septic, the Board of Health stuff, that all comes up at the last minute. But what I want to give you is one more handout, and I apologize, none of this is new information. This is all public information. But I knew that they were going to try and talk about the COA, and I just wanted to give you a brief timeline of the COA, and that's all I could give it to them as well.
If you focus on the last column...
Thank you.
It has the timestamp of the video, when this was obviously talked about, or already been said.
And one last thing is, there was a, someone made a comment about a dormer. We walked Front Street today. I counted 12 dormers on Front Street, like...
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I just have something quick to say here. And I've sent this information to the board before, but the HDC approval has no bearing on this matter as it stands. If they, if whatever court case is going on right now, if that is vacated, this ZBA approval isn't going to go through, because they don't have a HDC to go with it. And that being said, there is no proper order. You don't need HDC approval to go to ZBA. You don't need ZBA approval to go to HDC. These boards are to do their own, sort of stay in your lane and take care of what is yours.
And to dovetail with that, if our, if one of the conditions, if this was made to be, if a motion was made to approve with condition that it had to be constructed in accordance with COA, blah, 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 and any changes to that had to come before us, then if COA 3625 is vacated or has to go or remanded back to HDC, then this decision would then come back to us for whatever those changes are.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say, typically with conditions on HDC approvals, we will put the HDC approval number, and we typically add the verbiage, "as may be amended."
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Hold on one second. So Ms. Murphy, you've been waiting for, you have one minute for your second comment, and then we'll go to Attorney Wilson.
I agree with Ms. Del Vecchio, that this has gone on a long, long time. But as my mother used to say, so much of what we've heard today from so many people, what's that got to do with the price of eggs? I disagree that the certificate of appropriateness is unimportant. I'm not an idiot. Look, I know you're going to approve this. I just really ask that you nail, as one of the conditions, you know, the certificate of appropriate is the number that, excuse me, Chair McCarthy mentioned, be one of your conditions. And again, I would really love to see the new plans that have been submitted. I'd love to see everything that was, I'd love to see everything that was given to the ZBA. I raised my hand when they first asked who wanted a copy, and I didn't receive it. So again, I would like to receive that. And I just hope that when you approve this today, that you put on serious, serious conditions.
Okay, thank you. Hold on one second. Who do you have a question for?
Oh, Don Bracken.
Oh, okay. Billy?
I would just like to make a clarification. No one on this board nor staff said a COA is not important. It just does not factor into the ZBA's decision necessarily. They're two separate decisions.
Right. Attorney Wilson, do you still have something to say?
I do, just to dovetail on Mr. Sad's point, and what I perceive to be Madam Chair's concern is that if you don't want to see, in the optimistic likelihood that you approve, and it goes through a process to get to the point where it's able to be recorded, if you don't want to have this back before you because there's some fear or specter being levied that the HDC COA is going to be changed, you can condition your approval, if you're inclined to do so, so long as the component, that's the jurisdiction, as Ms. Allen points out, the component of the jurisdiction of the zoning board isn't changed by any potential amended COAs would obviate the need to come back before you.
Thank you. And you have...
Madam Chair, I apologize. I would ask the board to not suspend based on my absence, but I have to appear at the court at 2:00. I'm a little bit late, so I'm going to excuse myself from this hearing now, if that's acceptable for the balance of the board.
Sure.
And I would ask that you conclude and go to a vote. And I'd ask that you make the findings and vote favorably, and I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Wilson.
Lisa Soder, again, I just had one more comment, and that is, given that the scope and the specifics of the construction and the configuration of the project is still confusing to the board and to all of us, I think we would respectfully request that you continue this until everybody has the description of the project. uh, we would respectfully request that you continue this until everybody has the, the description of the project. That is the final description. Thank you.
Yeah, I still have my question.
Okay, so Lisa, and then I'd like to, then I'd like to close the public, you have a click here, and then I'd like to.
Yeah, I have a question for Don. Do you have a first floor elevation shot for this building?
Yes, it's on the site plan you have, um.
Oh, let's see, what page is that of the packet?
Blackwell Site Plan.
So, I mean, I think as part of the condition, we make that, no change in that elevation and then give
Yeah, that's what I'm looking, that's what I'm kind of trying to.
20 feet above that as the maximum ridge height.
And which page is that, Lisa?
I don't know. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to find a site plan that gives the, the first floor elevation.
17?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, if you look at the site plan from Blackwell on the south side of the building, it shows the first floor threshold at 19.72.
Uh, which, what page is that? I have page 35.
I don't know what your packet is.
It's not page 17.
No.
I think we can just believe, Don.
I just think it should be an exhibit.
No, I agree, because that's been a question and we, we couldn't get that answer last month.
So it's not in our package. So I mean, the things that I think, because I, I.
Is it page 35? No.
No, it's not on 35 either. Um, I think, you know, the important things for me are documenting the finished floor elevation, the maximum ridge height, the methods of, give us a foundation plan that shows where you're putting crawl space, where it's going to be a slab on grade, and have all that in a package, not just verbally, verbal, um, conditions, but actually exhibit conditions that are very, very clear. Because I think.
And I think that we asked for that, we definitely asked for the elevation height last time.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'm not, I, I agree that the amount that, that we have jurisdiction over, which is the 12 square feet within the setback along, um, you know, Beach Street or Middle Valley Road on the, on the west side of the building, seems de minimis from the relief that this board is asked to grant, particularly since they are not picking the building up, they're not changing the floor elevation, they're not doing any of the other things that were the biggest concerns previously. But I do think it makes sense to have it all in advance, well documented, in drawing, so that we have something very clear that we're voting on.
So Lisa, you're look, you're looking for mass, max ridge height, a foundation plan, the first floor elevation. And I'd also like to see the first, the one bedroom restriction imposed.
Uh, and that should be recorded.
By the Board of Health, which, yeah, isn't recorded and.
Will be recorded in our decision.
But wouldn't that want to be?
First of all, I don't, I don't see it, I look, I just looked for it, I don't.
Has it been?
Please stop yelling from the audience, it's not appropriate. Thank you.
Has it been recorded with the town?
I'm sorry, what? Linda, again, stop talking from your seat. If you have something to say, come to the microphone and introduce yourself and say it. And again, getting things yesterday when we all have other things to, like, it's extremely frustrating to sit on a board and try to make a decision and to try to navigate a decision when the information, the Board of Health issued the restriction.
Can I say something?
Sure, you can say whatever you want.
Okay. So the Board of Health limited it, the septic system to one bedroom. So we don't really need them.
However, they're appealing, but they're appealing that.
What about if it goes, but if it goes to Townsewer at some point?
In my notes, I have that they were going back.
But I thought there was a deed restriction that was emailed to us, and wouldn't that be filed as a separate deed restriction on the property? Or is that the Board of Health?
I can clear this up in like 10 seconds.
Okay, go. Okay, yeah. I can't tell you to go ahead, that.
We had one Board of Health meeting.
I have notes from last month that we were told that the, you were doing, applying for a variance for the septic, septic tank distance, the one bedroom restriction, and at the next meeting you were asking for an AI tank modification for the Board of Health.
Yes, so we applied for a variance and we had the first meeting with them. A big concern was putting a one bedroom deed restriction on, which is what we proposed as part of the variance application. It was concerned that the, the variance was, uh, that the restriction wasn't recorded yet. It would have been a condition anyway, so we said, okay, fine, we'll record that right away. Uh, so the restriction also has to be signed by the Board of Health and, uh, the attorney for the applicant sent it to the Board of Health about a week ago, and I just picked it up today so that it will, we'll be recording it within the next couple of days, so.
Okay.
So that's a separate restriction on the property, whether or not they can ever connect to Townsewer?
Well, no, it can be lifted if Townsewer is available, but, um, I don't, I don't know if it's written that way. I'd have to check it, but it, it still could be, it, it, it still could be a condition even of the special permit, I would assume.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure, absolutely.
Just, and this is something that, I might be slow on the uptake here, that Lisa understands better than me, but. So I'm referring to page 40 of our pack. And it has to do with the height, again, I think this is what we were getting at. But I see a 20 foot and I see a 30 foot elevation.
Well, that, that's above, um, that's above mean high wa- you know, mean high water, so that.
So, uh,
So basically if.
How much is it going up?
20 feet is what the COA says. So what I would just want to document on a site plan, finished floor elevation currently sits at 17.1. Maximum ridge height will be at 37.1.
I just, uh, so.
On a surveyed plan stamped.
I think I know the answer to this, but if it, the, the, uh, the encroachment's only going up less than a foot, is that because of the, of the roof line?
It's a shed.
20 feet. The encroachment. Okay, that's what I was trying to make it sound like.
The, the, the 20 foot section is outside of our jurisdiction.
Yeah.
And may I add, Madam Chair, that we were trying to figure out where the, um, heights were for the building on page 30 on the HDC plans. It does show ridge height. Um, you know, those plans say what I think we're asking.
I, I think having it as an engineering point on a site plan makes sense, though.
Okay.
Uh, you know, in, in, in conjunction with what they've, are showing on the COA, that this is what they're building, then why not put it in an engineered, on an engineered plan?
And on page 32, it's also shown with the embankment, which is what I was looking for, and now I see it. And the new addition, but again, that doesn't affect me and my decision making that much, since that's not what we're here to approve.
Madam Chair, could I, through you, could I ask something of the Ms. Alge?
Sure.
Wow.
I know, right?
That was correct. You, you, you know, I'm just trying to make sure that I can get around this substanti- substantially more detrimental than neighborhood. You mentioned that, but in what way specifically compared to the other structures on, in that neighborhood?
In that neighborhood? Well, the fact that this has traditionally been a one-story fisherman's shack and the fact that it is going up to a, a full story and above the bank for the first time, that's a substantially more.
I, I understand, and that seems to be more of a.
I, I know that.
We're talking about this five foot, that's what I'm referring.
Yeah, and I know you've said that the HDC approval isn't critical to your decision, and that's probably true. But what is important are the plans, you're being shown plans. You should have the ability to say, the area that we have jurisdiction over, whether it's five inches or 80 inches, is going to be built in accordance with the plans that we've seen. Whether or not those plans get changed later at the HDC or not, they should be built in accordance with what you've seen if you're granting relief as to it. And also, the restriction on one bedroom should really be a part of your decision as well because in the event that sewer is brought down there or the Board of Health has a change of heart, it was a critical factor in your decision-making process, and so you should condition it on that.
I agree.
Um, go ahead.
Can, Madam Chair, I'd just like to, there was a handout, maybe I don't want to go back to something that others haven't seen, but, you know, in a historic picture, and again, height is not within our jurisdiction, but, you know, it's a good visual aid to see that this 1880s picture of that structure is like very similar to what they're proposing to do. I.
Is that this structure?
No, it's not, but it's a, a type, but they're showing a, a type.
Yeah, that's all I want to say, thank you.
Okay, so if, if we, if we don't have any, anymore, and anyone else on Zoom or anyone in the audience, I think we should make a motion to close the public hearing.
We had a hand raised, but I don't think they, oh, okay, here she is, Carol, Carol Greenberg.
Okay. Ms. Greenberg?
I'm just using my phone. That's why I'm trying with my phone.
Hi, I'm Carol Greenberg, and I'm the president of the SCOTC Association. And, um, I just want to say, um, I appreciate everything that you are doing and the time and energy it's taken. Um, and I appreciate all the comments. Um, I do take offense to, uh, people saying bad things about our community because we only want the best to preserve the historic beauty of our beautiful village. Okay? I just don't understand why we need to, why you need to rush into a decision today when you can't wait one more month to get all of the information that you need. What I have learned, as we are an advocacy group and I work with many town officials, is it's very hard to enforce all of the things that you are putting forth. You know, they start building, people start building. I live off of Cannonberry, I know what a mess construction can be. So I'm just asking you to think that through, that once you approve one area, who is going to enforce that? So that's all I have to say, and I just want to make two corrections. Um, the homeowners, uh, have not adopted middle gully, that is not adoptable. They have adopted a bank street. And I also want to ask why their property is still on BRBO for rental if they live there full-time, as was. Thank you.
Madam Chair, could we?
Okay, thank you so much. Yes, so, okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna.
Can I ask one other question of Don?
Yes.
Or maybe I don't need to ask a question if it's going to be part of, uh, a motion that I would want included on the site plan.
Yeah, we can just discuss it.
Now, or you want to close the public hearing?
I think we should close the public hearing, but I think you, we, we're in, we can discuss condition, if we want to move forward and conditions.
I can answer those questions.
Point of clarity.
No, I think once, if you have a question for Don, then we should do that now.
Well, I think one of the other things that I think would be really helpful to have on the plan or a surveyed plan is the setbacks and a rendering, which we had at one point, showing the area that is within our jurisdiction that they're asking relief for, and a very specific dimension of what exists of, of, how do you say that? What exists today versus what it's going to be? I mean, I think just having, because I do agree during construction, things change a lot. And I think I just want to make sure that we have everything spelled out on a site plan, showing all the relief that they're requesting in a very, very orderly manner, rather than this haphazard way of getting information.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, just to correct the record on that, one of the first plans that I had Jeff do, and he redid it two or three times, it's in the file, it's in the folder, it is Exhibit A. It clearly shows in red the section that's the problem with all the setbacks to every single part of the structure. But it's, you know, like months ago, but it's in the file for Exhibit A because it clearly shows the, all the little setbacks for that one little section, and it clearly shows all the setbacks for the rest of the structure with the ground cover and everything else, and he's called it out in red. So that is in the file. Everything you're asking for is in the file.
Great, then it should be no problem, it should be no problem then for you to paride it again for our Exhibit A. Thank you, Linda, okay.
We've been doing it for a year.
Let's do a motion to close.
Quick clarification on a measurement, on a phrase, please.
Yeah.
Just so there's no spin to, um, this addition is a story and a half, or it's going to end up being a story and a half. They're adding a half of a second floor, not a full second floor. So this is not a, and I'm not in, you know, this is not in defense. This is just to make sure we have our terminology proper. This is going to end up being a story and a half, not a full two-story building. Is that, are we all in agreement? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes, please, thank you.
Madam Chair, point of order, if we close the public hearing, I can't accept any new information from anyone. So if this is continuing and the board's expecting.
For our decision, if we say we want to have a site plan.
I think we could get that, but I mean, I won't be able, it's not going to be up for public comment. Any information submitted in the applicant shouldn't necessarily come to the mic next meeting to have a discussion with the board.
No, I think they either. Okay, wait, hold on, hold on, hold, hold on. So Billy, what you're saying is if we close the public hearing and we talk about condi- if we talk about conditions for a motion that we would put together in the affirmative and then everyone would vote on how they feel about that, it'll either go forward or it won't. That motion with those conditions, we could request part of that to be an engineering, uh, an engineered plan showing ma- max ridge height, foundation, first floor elevation, the setbacks, existing verse proposed, all of those things.
Correct.
And then that would just be it, we don't have comment on it.
That would be it. I, that would not be necessarily, uh, you know, that would not be something for the public to opine on further. That would just be for the board.
And it's based on exist, it's based on, it's just putting together all of the information that we have?
Into one plan?
Yeah.
With the conditions.
And would, would, would that be a Blackwell plan or a Bracken plan? I'm sort of confused at who's running the surveying ship at the moment.
Yeah, it could be either, or Jeff is the surveyor record. We stepped in for the engineering aspect of it, so we will work together, whatever.
Engineering versus McCartel engineering.
Yeah, yeah, McCartel, because there's no foundation, it's not required anymore.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, just to, uh, talk about the motion, I think we have enough information to make a decision.
Yeah.
And I don't see a point in continuing the public hearing, even with some of these things. So that, I just, that's myself of closing the public hearing. Otherwise, it's going to continue.
It'll just continue indefinitely.
And Madam Chair, I think I would be comfortable getting information based on the conditions that we're putting on our approval and making sure that everything we're asking for comes in and is understandable. And if we don't get what we're asking for through the conditions, the list of conditions, then our approval doesn't stand.
Yeah, you don't sign it.
Right.
Because it doesn't, you don't have the information that.
Yeah. Okay, so I think we can, if, if Jim, you wanted to make that motion?
Yes.
I, I already seconded it.
Joe.
Okay, so, um, just bef-
I was younger then.
Wait, hold on, hold on, before we move forward there, so we currently have the, the, the current board that's going to vote on this. Michael, are you going to vote on this since we're doing it today?
It's up to you. I will.
Then he'd have to sign, he'd have to sign it then.
Okay.
Let me.
Not.
Okay.
Okay, so.
You may leave now.
It's going to be Alisa, myself, Joe, Lisa, and Jim that are going to vote, okay?
I think.
Again, Linda.
Actually.
What?
Because I'm not going to be around to look at.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Presented to the board.
Yeah, I think it just makes more sense, it's, it's cleaner for you and all of us. Okay, so Jim, did you want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I did.
Yeah, I seconded.
And Joe seconded, okay.
I was quite behind her.
Okay, so, um, I'm just going to do roll call vote. Jim?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Alisa?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, so public hearing is closed. So I think that we ha- we do have a decision back from, um, what we talked about last, uh, September, uh, 23.
Is that in today's packet as well?
No, I just, I don't think so, but, um, but anyway.
Do you have another copy?
Yeah, I gave us one. Um, so I was just looking at the conditions for those.
Well, can we discuss what, what's been brought up in the public hearing?
Yeah, 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 I just wanted to, I just wanted to go through like what I had for notes and then see if anybody had, um, had, had additional things that we might want to add. So, um, obviously the first one saying, you know, that So obviously, the first one saying, you know, that any proposed alterations and expansions are done in substantial conformity with the plans approved by the HDC Certificate of Appropriateness, ending in 3625, as the same may be amended from time to time. The project shall be completed in accordance with the proposed conditions site plan to accompany the zoning board of appeals application dated 11/15/21 from Blackwell. No further construction involving exterior changes or expansion without further relief from the ZBA. Prior to issue, hold on, prior to issuance of the building permit, the general contractor, site manager, and construction supervisor will provide all contact information to the zoning administrator and any neighbors. Middle Gully Road shall not be used for parking construction vehicles or any vehicles related to the project. No exterior construction between Memorial Day and Labor Day of any given year relative to the construction contemplated under the decision. And then we talked today about the, the property is restricted to one bedroom, that there, the applicant has represented, there's no level increase in elevation, there's no change in the floor level, there's, the walls are not coming down and the house is not moving.
Can I, can I?
I don't know if that's true, is it?
I think that under B, there should be a new site plan dated today-
Yeah.
Or in two days-
Yep.
That specifies existing floor elevation, proposed floor elevation, proposed maximum ridge height, the 20 feet above whatever that proposed floor elevation is, that denotes the triangle of which we are giving our special permit for, and what the maximum height above the finished floor, that section of roof will go to. And that'll be Exhibit A, so B will change to include that stuff. Then you don't have to individually list all that other stuff.
Yeah, I didn't know if this, the site plan that was in the original decision, I don't even know if that's still relevant.
I don't think it is.
Yeah.
I'm, I don't, so-
We'd supplement that.
And then we don't have to list individually, there's no floor change in elevation-
Right.
Because that'll be on the plan and all that other stuff. And then it's a little bit cleaner.
Yep. Agreed. Those were just the notes that I made as we went along, like-
I, can we call it?
Yeah, go for it, Jim.
So, I mean, we've, this is kind of a, I know it's a fait accompli, since we've kind of tipped our hat before we even closed the hearing, but I just want to address these things because I think it's important that we are not arbitrary and capricious and we make our comments well-known, why we're doing this. So, on that note, I don't think the, I don't think the change is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. The neighborhood, when I look at the depictions of all the other houses on the street, they're much, much larger, and I don't, I don't see how this little change is going to make a difference. Remember, it's going up 12 inches. That's it. We're not the HDC, so I don't think we need to make any real observations on the, on the height, the stories, all that. We're talking about this one piece, and I don't, I think when we look at the law, it's pretty simple. And we've only just muddied this up by taking a quasi-HDC view of things. So we are an independent judicial board, and we don't rely on anyone else. We don't, it doesn't matter what the HDC, I say that meanness, not, not because I don't care about them, but we, it's outside of our scope, as we've stated. And, you know, I understand all the concerns from my perspective, and I wish you guys could work it out. Like, this is, these are things that need to be worked out among the neighbors, but we have the specific bylaw that we need to follow, and I just don't see where it is, this change is going to be more detrimental to the neighborhood. That's it. Thank you. And I, I support it as far as to say.
I, I appreciate you bringing up the most relevant thing that we need to talk about is this substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, because I do, I agree with you, it kind of got lost in the discussion based on all of the other parts of this.
Yeah, I, I agree with Jim. I don't think we need to talk about the ridge height in the first floor. The HDC will take care of that. I don't think that's, we're becoming HDC.
I disagree with that. I mean, I'm not trying to become the HDC. I think that they have, through testimony, said that they're going to do a certain number of things, and why not make it part of our decision? I'm not trying to become the HDC. I'm just saying, they've said that they're building according to these plans. Let's put it on a site plan.
I agree with Lisa on that.
Why not?
Just because they've represented that, and, and because the, the, you know, even though we just are looking at this one triangle as we've, that one triangle triggers them to be here, and so-
We're allowed to do whatever we want to do. And I, and I don't think it's unreasonable to ask those things, given the tightness of the site and the concern that the neighbors are having, just to ensure that it's built.
I agree.
I didn't think it was unreasonable. I just thought it was outside what we ought to be doing.
Duly noted.
But I mean, I'm not getting my, all excited about it or anything.
Sorry, I am.
All right, so does, we can keep talking about it, but it seems like we're pretty much there with what we want to put together for a motion. Does anyone, Lisa, why don't you give it a whirl, since you-
But you have everything written down, right?
Well, I just have.
I mean, the conditions.
Yeah.
The condition, so I will make a motion to grant the special permit with the following conditions. Let me read them all again. The proposed alterations and expansions shall be done in substantial conformity with the plans approved by the Nantucket Historic District Commission, oh, Commission Certificate of Appropriateness, number HDC 2021053625, as the same may be amended from time to time. B, the project shall be completed in accordance with the proposed conditions site plan to accompany zoning board of appeals application dated December whatever, I guess that'll be open.
Yeah, to be, date to be determined.
Prepared by Blackwell Associates or Don Bracken, reduced copy of which is attached herewith as Exhibit A. That site plan shall list the existing floor elevation, the proposed floor elevation, the exist, the proposed maximum ridge height, as well as the proposed maximum intrusion within the area that we have jurisdiction over. And it should show that triangle of where we have jurisdiction.
And did you want the first floor elevation, or is that included?
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, floor elevation. There shall be no further expansion of the structure within the required five-foot rear setback area without further relief from the ZBA. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, the general contractor, site manager, and our construction supervisor will provide all contact information to the zoning administrator and to any neighbors upon request. Middle Valley, Middle Gully Road will not be used for parking of construction vehicles or any vehicles related to the project. There shall be no exterior construction related to this specific project between Memorial Day and Labor Day of a given year. We're not going to talk about hours of construction, right? We're going to leave that out.
But subject to the one-bedroom restriction.
And then property is restricted to one bedroom. Is there anything else?
Well, they have to put the restriction on record, right?
No, we're going to put that in our decision.
Oh, okay, and it goes on record, right, right, right.
Okay. Okay, so that-
Second.
That is Lisa's motion.
Can we amend that?
Sure.
The one-bedroom restriction in accordance with the ruling by the-
No, it's, it's in addition to that. Because I, if, if they get onto Town Sewer, I don't want, I still think the one-bedroom restriction should be there, and that would be eliminated.
They can always, they could always come back to it.
I just think we're overstepping things with, with this two and a half foot. This is like a bump out for a shower.
I know, but they've, but they've offered that, so-
Okay.
They, they can come back to request it.
I don't know where they'd put a second bedroom anyway.
Yeah, so-
This is big.
Okay, so the motion.
Second.
Withdrawal.
Okay, so Lisa's made the motion, Alisa has seconded it, so I will do a roll call vote. Lisa?
Aye.
Alisa?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Yes, we're going to take a five-minute break.
What did you say, Jim?
Good thing this is the only thing we're going to do today.
Susan, do I have to do an application today?
Yes.
Is that finally, do you have your little script that I could read? I have it on my phone, but it's a little small. Sorry.
Because we're both out on the next one.
Okay, so continuance can go now?
Yeah, you can do it.
Okay. Hello?
So just say, moving on to new business.
New business. We are going to regarding application 12-24 South Side Constant Neighborhood Association LLC. One Magnolia Ave, 10 Grand Ave, 7R, 10, 11, 16, 17, 19 Ocean Ave, 2, 4, and 5 Cottage Ave. We are going to continue that until January 9th, 2025. Correction to the, this is a typo, it says 2024.
Thank you.
Is this a motion?
Yes.
Would someone make a motion to continue the South Side Constant Neighborhood Association application?
Still moved.
A second? Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Continued.
Did Mark ever?
And then is South Mill next?
Right, I'm out of there.
Six West Dover is up next.
Oh.
Nobody should move Jen over.
Is this me?
Do you want this one? Want this to have?
No.
I mean, it's just a C, so you can see like the timeline stuff.
Oh dear, okay. Let's see. Moving on to Susan, Susan McCarthy and John Bresser are not going to participate in this next application, which is 23-24 CBR ACK Holdings LLC, 6 West Dover Street, represented by Steve Cohen.
Jen Cohen.
Jen Cohen, sorry, Jen Cohen, my apologies. Let's see. And who do we have serving on this?
The five of us.
Just the five of us? One, two, three.
Was this previously open?
Yes.
I don't think it was ever opened.
It was never opened.
Oh, never opened.
It's never opened. It's just been continued.
Okay, it's been on the agenda.
Yeah, we've just continued it continuously since when we received it.
The only question is, is Mark Poore on?
Mark Poore is online, but we have not discussed this matter yet. So you can, you can set the board however you like.
Yeah.
So, Mark Poore, are you with us?
He was, he may have.
I, I saw him, but I don't know what happened. Mark Poore, please speak up if you're with us. Okay. So in this case, we're just going to do the board that is physically here right now. That's Jim, Lisa, Michael, Joe, and myself.
I'd be happy to sit with the understanding that if it-
You're not going to be at the next meeting?
Well, if it does carry over to another meeting, I won't be here.
Okay.
And there won't be anyone in the audience to mull in.
Are we, will you just check if Mark Poore is up there? He could mull in if he watches the meeting.
I see him up here as a panelist, but-
He's not responding?
Yeah, if, if, if for whatever reason we don't get through this and Michael's gone next month, Mark would just have to watch the YouTube recording of this to mull in.
Okay.
If he's not paying attention now.
Right, so he'd have to watch it and mull in. Okay, so is the applicant here to present?
I'm here over the phone.
Oh, you are, hi.
I am, hi. Should I turn my camera on?
That'd be great.
Okay, I can do that. I'm at the airport.
Hi, oh.
Hi.
Would you please introduce yourself and-
Yeah, of course.
Present this application?
Yeah, of course. My name is Jennifer Cohen, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. And I want to thank you all for continually pushing this forward. I appreciate it. It's been a fall. And I also want to thank you, Michael, Omara. I feel fortunate to be in your last meeting, even if you're not sitting on it. So thank you for all your time you've given to Nantucket. Okay, so here we have a request for a variance. And what we have is a, the property, the locus is 6 West Dover. It's in the ROH district with the town overlay. There are three structures on the property. There's a house and a shed and a studio. The only structure that needs the variance is the studio. There is a five-foot side yard setback. And the, there is a measurement that's only three feet six inches from it. So we have a one, a one-foot six-inch incursion into the, the side setback for the structure. The accessory structure. So the variance that we're seeking here is simply to validate the sighting of the structure and to not have to move it, not for any increase in the nonconformity. And we're not creating, we're not creating a new nonconformity. It's simply to validate the sighting and also so that the applicant can clean up the permitting of it. Because the applicant just purchased the property a few months ago, and the structure was built and permitted, or lack thereof, by the previous owner, who was elderly. So the applicant wants to clean everything up and wants to just validate the sighting of it. So we're not here, this is a voluntary action, there's been no enforcement action. And I want to go through why I believe that, I think we have a, why we meet the criteria, why the applicant meets the criteria for the, for the variance. You know, I think what we have here is the structure where it actually exists, and I believe that we submitted some photos. The strip of land between it and the abutter is, is unique actually for the area in that it is full of mature trees with lots of roots. And they don't, this doesn't, you know, this is an issue that solely relates to this piece of property. And some of those trees are actually the abutters and some are the applicants. And the machinery needed to build a structure versus the machinery needed to take down a structure are very different. The other issue is the front, the street side face, the street line of the property also has mature trees along it. In front of the main, and the only way to get into the property is the street. Currently, you can't see the accessory structure from the street because of the mature trees and the mature plantings. And in front of the home that exists, there's a very old stone wall. So the way to get into the property would be to take down the street side mature plantings and the machinery that has come, that is needed. The applicant had somebody come through and talk, you know, there's only three to five feet between the structure and the abutting property line. There's a lot of tree roots that are gnarled around the cottage. And the, the, the trees, both because they have to be taken down as well as to maneuver around the thing, will, will be impacted. So we have this issue of how this property actually is. These, you know, these aren't issues that are generated by any sort of personal circumstances. These are just mature trees that have been there for quite a while. And the abutter at 2 West Dover, he is in favor of, he has submitted a letter. He supports the relief requested. This, this structure is closest to his property, and they've lived there since the 90s. It abuts their driveway and it screens between the two properties. So, and, and if you even look at, you know, if you look at the GIS, the, if you layer it with the, some of the land use and topography, you'll notice that the, this area between the two properties is actually, they have it, you know, shown as a deciduous forest because the trees have been there for a long time. And the only other area really that has this amount in that, on that street is diagonal across the street, the town lot that goes sort of down below grade there. So we have these limiting circumstances for this piece of property that aren't generally present in the overall district, but are present here that would really limit and constrict the, what we go into the second criteria, which is, you know, the hardship that might be, that will come about if we enforce the need to move the property. I mean, the, there's a cost associated with it, but that's not real. And to move it and to re-landscape it, but that's not even the main motivating factor here. What we have is, you know, this affects the abutter as well as the applicant in that there is a likelihood that there will be damage to these trees. They have, some of them, it's amazing they've existed as long as they have because they have shallow roots. And like I said before, you know, what is needed to put a structure up versus what's needed to go in, even though it's on sonotubes, but to go in and move the structure with the machinery needed is likely going to cause some disturbance and possible loss of the trees. And it, it sort of, for something that should seem simple, it really is not. It makes it uniquely difficult to comply with these zoning regs.
Okay, great.
Need to, and then the third criteria in terms of the detriment to the neighborhood and if there's a detriment to the neighborhood and whether it aligns with the bylaws intent. I think that it's clear that this is, that keeping the structure here and not having it be moved is no detriment to the neighborhood. What, you can't even see it from the street the way it is now. The direct abutter would, is in favor of the relief requested. And we're not seeking a change in use. We're not seeking an increase in nonconformity. We're not creating a new nonconformity. So we're not, we're not causing any additional detriment to the property or the neighborhood. And, you know, I think that-
Great. And I, I think we, we have the information we need unless you have-
Okay. I was just going to go into just, I, I think that, you know, it's in terms of it's in line with the zoning bylaw, the, you know, the need to address some site-specific challenges. So that's it. And I really thank you for your time. And again, thank you for moving this forward for me.
Thank you. Would you stay on in case you have any, there are any questions?
Yeah, of course.
On this?
Yes, of course.
Lisa Botticelli has the first question.
Yeah. Hi, Lisa.
New nonconformity, but I'm questioning the shed that's nonconforming. Doesn't show up on the GIS map. When was that shed built?
I, you know, I'm not actually sure when the shed was built.
Theoretically, it's a nonconformity of 4.5 feet. But it was also built without, and it said that permitting.
Oh, sorry, thank you, Billy. Then I don't think that nonconformity-
Let me look and see what I have. I, I wasn't, we weren't even, we weren't seeking a variance for the shed. We were only seeking it for the ancillary structure.
I, I understand that, but you're speaking about a nonconformity that already exists. And without that shed, the nonconformity does not exist. That shed was not grandfathered. There is no grandfathered nonconformity.
The, okay, let me, so the sheds aren't attached to the structure.
Is it an optical illusion or does the property, does that setback or that space between the property line and the shed get wider as you go towards the back of the property?
The property line angles.
It gets slightly wider.
Yeah, it looks like it's at an angle, and then are they out, is that shed outside?
No, it says, right on the site plan, it says 4.5 feet away for the shed. So, I mean, you know, I have a, I, I, I don't understand how we could vote for this.
Right.
Well, that's my personal opinion and I-
Do you have any more questions for her on this?
The only-
The applicant is also on the meeting. He just, he sent me a text saying he's also in the meeting. He may have information on when the shed was put up. It's not attached to the cottage. It's separate.
I understand.
And it's poss, it's very, the cottage itself is the one that has the three, is, is the front corner incursion into the setback. And I, I don't know, if the shed wasn't there, do we go back to my original argument? Is that, is that something?
No, no, I was just saying, I was just saying you had mentioned that we weren't creating a new nonconformity, but you are because you're within the five-foot setback. There is no, if the shed isn't grandfathered and you don't have relief for the shed in its location, there is no existing nonconformity.
Oh, correct, correct. I, I misspoke. Really what I meant was, yes, thank you, Lisa. Thank you for the clarification.
And it doesn't appear the shed existed because the GIS map does not show that structure. And so, you know, it's not-
What I, what I should have said was that the, the incursion into the setback, you know, there, there's, there's no request to do anything else with the property. I mean, there is, there is a world where, you know, the applicant, the, the new owner just sort of rode this for a number of years and then it becomes a legally nonconforming property. And then it would be, you know, not seeking any further nonconformity. But I, I think he really just wants to have this cleaned up in the way that the previous owner did.
Jen, can you tell us when the structure, the existing cottage and when the shed were built?
Yeah, the, the existing cottage was built in 2020, 2021. And the shed, I'm trying to find out some information now, let's see, I'm going to-
And was there a building permit applied for, for either of those structures?
No, no. So the previous owner, who's since deceased, she was elderly. She had a contractor come and build the property, I mean, build the cottage structure. And that is how my client, the current applicant, found it and wants to, has been in discussions with Paul Murphy about, you know, getting the building permit, getting all the inspections, bringing, making sure it's all good. That's his goal is to, you know, validate the sighting, continue everything he's been doing with Paul. And he's just, you know, making, he's painting the inside and that sort of thing. But, so he's really just trying to clean this up.
Okay, does anybody else on the board have any questions?
The, the current owner knew about it when he bought it.
Yes, it was part of the purchase and sale agreement. The seller sort of started this process. And then we took it over upon purchase because we wanted to, like I said, the applicant just wants to make sure that everything that needed to have been done gets done correctly. So that's what, that's where we are going.
Sure, of course.
Okay, Jim, do you have any questions?
I just, are we talking about the existing cottage or the shed?
The existing cottage. I think she called it a studio before, but on the plan it's called existing cottage.
A cottage, right, structure. It's, it's a-
The shed, they haven't asked for relief on the shed.
We have not.
It just sort of appeared, no.
I'm asking.
Since 2021, it sounds like.
Well, since what, whenever-
It's not part of the application?
It's not part of the application, but it-
It's clearly part of the application.
It should have been part of the-
I, I am asking because I was under the understanding-
Jen, are you talking, hello, Jen, are you talking to the board right now?
Yes, I was under the understanding that the, that the shed was there previous, but now I'm just trying to find out when it was put up so that I can tell you.
Okay. It, it's, obviously it's under, you know, it's a zoning shed or it's under the square footage. But I'm wondering why there isn't, or maybe it's on a different page. I'm looking at page seven. Is there somewhere else showing the setbacks of the shed from the east and southern property lines?
It, it's compliant on this, on one side. It shows up on, look on page, hang on, there's a, there's a site plan on page 16.
Okay.
And it says 4.5 feet away from the, I guess that's easterly side property line, 5.8 away from the southerly property line.
So the setback issues from the front of the cottage, that's within the setback by 18 inches. And then back at the shed, that is within the setback by seven inches. Is that true?
That is true.
Yep.
I was just under the understanding, and I'm trying to remember, because otherwise I would have included it in my request and/or we would have moved it or, you know, changed the shed.
Oh, I see the 4.5.
But, but I'm, I'm trying to see where it was. I obviously inherited the file, so I'm trying to remember where I-
Jen, do you mind if I jump in here?
No.
In the, in the initial application filed by the previous applicant, it was part of their addendum that the shed has existed for more than 10 years.
Okay.
And because of no levied zoning enforcement order, there is a provision in the bylaw that, you know, a fraction that goes undetected or unreported for more than 10 years becomes legal. How do we-
Thank you.
10 years.
Thank you.
Question, but I believe that would come down to the building commissioner's determination.
Well, couldn't, we could do it on MapGeo.
Yeah.
And look at the aerials, which I'm going to do right now.
Yep.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you. Thank you all.
6 West Dover, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
6 West.
Thank you, Billy.
Or do you just do?
Do W, 6W Dover.
W, no period.
Here, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to share my screen. I have my GIS pulled up.
Oh, great. Yeah. So then we can do layers, aerial imagery. So past 10 years would be 2014, 2011, 12, let's see. It's hard to tell on the aerial.
Go back. That's 2007. It's just a dark area. It's nearly impossible to see that. That's 2011, 12. Again, it's nearly impossible to determine.
How about 2018?
I'm sure.
2018, does it show up?
It's, it's just so hard to, I can't zoom in any further than the screen currently is.
It sort of, in the 2018, it sort of looks like it's in that back corner. But there's so many trees there, it's really hard to tell.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the board on this? And other than, yes, Joe? Oh, I know, I just wanted to make sure that we're all done saying what we have to say. Anybody? Okay, let's take this to anybody here in the audience that would like to comment or give any information. Please tell us your name first.
Hi, Caitlin, hi Caitlin Casey, I'm one of the homeowners. Sorry, didn't want to interrupt when the board was speaking, followed protocol. The shed-
Thank you.
The shed definitely is materially older than the cottage. We purchased property in July. I recognize that I wanted to cross every T and dot every I, but the former owner did make some missteps here. Did not file any building permits. As part of putting the property under contract, it was a requirement and we agreed that the seller would take the as-built plans of this property to the HGC. And the HGC approval was granted, which I know is different from the ZBA variance. That was granted in May.
For the cottage?
For the cottage. And that also included, as part of the rendering, is the shed. Although the shed, what Billy mentioned, is materially older. We don't really know how the cottage was built and people didn't realize it because it's such a busy part of town. And so I want, want to just make sure that we follow the correct steps and get the approvals needed to keep the structure as is where it is. The next door neighbor has written a letter of support, Harry Ostrander. He's 88 years old, he's very concerned as are we with the, just the vegetation and the changes that occur there. Not that it means a variance should be granted just on that, but it's a little bit of a unique scenario. We definitely will respect whatever decision the, the board makes. I think ultimately we, this wouldn't be moved anytime in the near future just given the costs that we're incurring on the main home, to put in heat and shore the foundation.
Is there any more ground cover allowed on this property? Jen, do you know if there's any more ground cover allowed? Are they maximized?
Let me look and see. I do want to say, what I just noticed when I was looking at the GIS and not the photos, not the aerial images, which is the regular old GIS, it looks like, if you look at the shape of this- It looks like, if you look at the shape of the, the cottage and the shed, it looks like they have it lumped together just in its, um, structure. So it's on, you see it on the GIS, just not the, just not the aerial images. But I was just, but let me look and see, um, on the.
I, I see the ground coverage, Jen, there are 23.4.
Okay.
And they're allowed 40.
Yeah.
So they've got plenty of ground cover. But just to go back to the GIS, Jen, when I go to the GIS on 2018, it is, the shed is clearly not there.
Okay, I didn't think it was, I couldn't tell, I couldn't tell if that back corner was, was a roof.
No, I think that's trees.
Okay.
Because it's really evident in 2023, it's really evident, it shows the two buildings. 2021, Close Henry, it shows.
Can you do like forensics on this, Lisa, like, like dates on windows or something like that?
I don't. When you change the transparency on 2018.
Before you bought it.
In the shed?
Uh, no, that.
In the house?
Yeah, um, yeah. We, yeah, Billy?
I, the, the square footage of the shed is showing roughly 77 square feet.
72, that's on the plan, yep.
Is there a reason that couldn't be moved? I could probably pick that up with my hands.
It's like an outhouse, we can move that.
Whoever on this board, whomever, uh, do you have, do you have estimates of those costs that are here?
Yeah, it's in here.
Does that seem right? You know, I'm sick, you could build something there, tear it down, at that price, right?
No, $50,000 was the, the moving cost.
But everything.
It's, looks like it.
Not including the re-landscaping.
Labor quote 25 to move, foundation seven.
Does that seem right?
I mean, it certainly doesn't seem, uh, I mean, if it's on, it's on sonotubes.
Yeah, is it, is it on sonotubes?
Yes.
And pouring new, pouring new peers, it's easy, I mean, I.
I just, what I'm getting at is the financial hardship part of this, and maybe it's not the cost to fix this.
Yes, it's on page 25 of the packet.
But they're also presenting that it impacts the veg, natural vegetation that's there.
Wow, I, I think there's like some invasive stuff in there, whatever.
Yeah. Jen, did you have something else to say?
I, I did, I don't know the protocol, so I, excuse me if I'm doing it incorrectly.
Please, go ahead, Jen.
Uh, so, yes, the, the one thing that the, the quote does not really reflect the full, you know, it, these, the replacement of the landscaping, yes, Jim, I agree, there are definitely some invasives, but if you go and look, if you look at some of the photos, if you look at even some of the listing photos from the real estate companies, there are big mature trees there. Yes, there's definitely some ivy and some other stuff wrapped around it, it could be cleaned up, but the quote does not include replacement for mature things. This is just sort of, you know, your basic, put some privet in along the property lines, which is why the quote is where it is. I mean, if you look at some of the trees, then I could screen share, but it, there, I was looking at the real estate listings before, earlier today, and, and they have a, one photo that shows that back corner, kind of where the, um, you, you can see the shed, but there are some big trees, probably the trucks. Are probably, this isn't, this isn't, um, these aren't insignificant, and that's what goes.
I'm gonna interject really quick, and also, if the structure, Jen, just one quick thought, if the structure was just built three years ago, you know, to get 16-foot two-by-fours in there, for it to be a construction site, uh, it can't be that hard to get to.
I don't know how it was done. I don't know how, how it was built.
To, to access it with trucks and parking and lumber and delivery of lumber, I mean, there's.
I think carrying in the wood to build this definitely would have been more feasible because you can navigate around the trees. I tried to include a couple more pictures of the actual trees that are on the property, not the line, but adjacent between the cottage and the main house. So I think if you were carrying an equipment, it'd be more feasible to do it. But in order to physically move this full structure, we're gonna have to take down the fence, um, the arbor, and then all of the, most of the mature landscaping. It appears whoever built this, excuse me, um, went off a novice measurement off of the fence, which they assumed was on the property line. And when we actually look at a survey, that's when you recognize that they materially built this incorrectly, 17 inches in the front part of the cottage towards the street and, uh, the five, six inches in the back corner. And if they had done, followed proper protocol, got the permits, got the, looked at the survey, they would have known they built the wrong spot.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience or online that has a comment or questions?
Is it possible to purchase a piece of the adjoining property to make it fit?
We have, we have not approached that.
It depended on the size of two Westover, yeah, you could move that line.
It's happened quite a few times.
Yeah. I mean, I just don't feel like this reach, you know, it, it, it doesn't rise to variance relief for me. A, it was built without a building permit, the property was purchased knowing that it did not have a building permit and was in the setback, so, um, and I think there is a way to get equipment in here between this vegetation and the walkway. And it's only on sonotubes, it's just, it, I can't bring myself to vote for it, but I'm only one out of five people.
I, I had no sympathy, but I have a little sympathy now.
I kind of feel the same way.
I mean, you, you could have just waited.
Yeah, which is fine.
Ten years.
Well, he's halfway there.
I mean, I respect that you're trying to clean it up, but.
Nope, he's gonna say anything, but I, I couldn't, I can't, I can't vote for it either.
But going forward, doing any further work on the property, you, this would need to be cleared up.
Or sale.
Right.
Not, not any, any.
They accepted this with purchase.
Yeah, I think you could do inspection work as long as you're not affecting, right, that's, I'm not sure, but.
I hear background noise, where is that?
I'm at the airport, it's probably me. I can meet myself.
Okay, so, um, no letters on this, any letters that we know of?
Only the letters saying that they didn't want in favor, that's number two.
Yeah, the neighbor was the only correspondence I've received from any abutter.
I don't think that vegetation's gonna be affected either way, because you're just getting further away from that. And when, when you look at the pictures, there's no vegetation between the building and the fence, which is his abutting line.
Right. Which is where all that ivy is in the picture, right?
No, his abutting, the property line has the mature trees on it, and that has those shallow roots. Like if you walk between the cottage and the property line, between two Westover and six Westover, there's all these gnarled property, all these gnarled tree roots that, that are the mature trees that go along that property line. That's what will, the, the machinery will have to run over, that, that's what the, a butter, I mean, that, those are his trees, their trees, I should say. So that's part of the concern there, is that the hardship isn't just to the applicant, it's actually to the abutter as well.
Okay, thank you. I don't really know what to do next.
Well, I, I would.
Yes, please do.
We've got two votes against it, we need four to, at the variance. So if, uh, I, since it's my last day on the board, I will give the applicant some advice. That, I, I don't think you, you want to vote on this.
Okay.
I, my, the way I read it, because you lose some of your rights, you'll, you'll pick up,
Yes.
a period of statute for five years, little over five years.
Yeah.
Doesn't, uh, foreclose you from, from moving it.
Right.
Because I don't think the town is gonna have anything to say about it.
Okay.
Nor, nor is the neighbor gonna, nor is the neighbor gonna.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah, you should withdraw it.
Billy?
Okay.
Only, the only, you know, enforcement would happen if someone were to report it.
Yeah.
Okay.
If it were to trigger by other applications of some sort, it would.
Yeah, I mean, the site plan would have to be rectified in order to, to do something, you know, to another structure on that property.
So, I guess.
And I don't, I don't think any work is being done.
What's that, Jen?
And I don't think that any work is being done, um, but Caitlin would be able to speak to that um, more closely.
Title, or clear. So how, with that advice from Mr. Omero, what would you like to do from here? We can, um, take a vote or you can choose to, uh, rescind without prejudice?
Comments about how, how experienced he is, and I think, thank you for your advice and we'll withdraw it, sorry.
I agree. Thank you, Caitlin.
Withdraw without prejudice?
Yeah, exactly.
And which means you can come back here.
Tomorrow.
For a five-year period, with a different board perhaps, uh, but.
Thank you for the advice.
Yep.
Michael, thank you, thank you, board.
Fair way to go, you're not, it leaves your options open.
Yeah.
So should we take a vote to?
I don't think we have to vote.
No, we don't have to.
We don't have to vote. Without prejudice, we can just, we can just withdraw.
Okay, oh, okay.
I, I believe so, right, Billy?
I, I thought we all would vote to agree to allow them.
The board accepts a withdrawal. This has been advertised and everything else, so typically we would have to accept a withdrawal at a public hearing, which.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay, second, okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay. Oh, I don't know. Oh, are you recusing yourself on this too? Okay.
John is, John, are you up then? You're up.
Do you want the script?
What? He, he knows, he used to be our administrator, he knows.
I'm teasing, but I.
I need all the help I can get. John invented the script.
Okay.
Uh, all right, uh, next up on the agenda is application 2924, One South Mill LLC. One South Mill LLC, One South Mill Street, uh, for the applicant. Hi, uh, can you come up to the mic, please identify yourself. Uh, I'm not sure if Ms. Williams is gonna help you, I know she's out there, but.
Yeah, she is.
Okay, uh, but please, uh, identify yourself.
Garrett Roberts, uh, One South Mill.
Okay. Ms. Williams, will you please come on up to the mic and identify yourself for this application?
How am I doing? Who is my board?
Well, let's see, why don't we go, we have Joe, Elisa, Lisa, myself, and, uh, why don't we do Jim?
Hold on, Joe, Lisa.
Joe, Lisa, Elisa.
Elisa.
Myself and Jim.
Okay.
In case it gets.
As you see, the owner's over there. This is an existing structure. It's that whole street there, there, and down on the corner of Pleasant Street, where all Bernie Bartlet's family and his father's family and father before that. Pieces have been sold off, um, since Bernie passed away and his dad and his mother passed away. And this garage was attached to probably one of the other buildings on the street, um, or used as a shop by Bernie and, or some member of his family. It is a garage, it does occupy what it occupies. And we are picking it up slightly in order to put a slab, a new slab underneath it, because some of it's on dirt, as I, as you see from the pictures. And then putting it back down, the HGC has approved it, there's a picture of it right there. The HGC has approved it to be, um, fixed, and the roof on the left is coming up slightly, but the overall height, other than the, uh, moving it up out of the dirt due to the slab, but there's the design right there on the screen. And it's going back down in the same place, so nothing's really happening. So the only major, I'm sorry, John, can I ask? The, the relief obviously is, you know, you're building within the setbacks, but there's very little raising of the roof within setbacks, but it's really the change of use on a non-conforming lot from a accessory garage. To a conforming use is allowed by right, so anytime you change an accessory inside a setback, you've got to come in here and get the change of use. Yeah, and there's no parking. Uh, well, there is a parking space sort of in the front, but it's the one that's always been there, that's not changing. Hold on, I'm trying to see, oh, it's sort of a parallely. Yeah, it's parallel, half on, half off, but it, nothing's changing in the front. It's gonna go back and it's in, in the same location. It's not expanding out of the footprint, so it's exactly that structure, and we're just working with that structure, but we need to put it on a solid foundation, because right now it's all over the place. Is it in front of the existing garage doors, the parking?
See the photo up on the screen.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, it's sort of in the, the area to the right. Yeah, so basically the lot line is the different colored, um. Pretty much. paving is the lot line, and then the sidewalk is. Well, it's not even a sidewalk, it's just something. Whatever it is. Whatever it is, but that's not changing, it's grandfathered without parking. It's pretty much grandfathered for the entire lot and the, uh, structure itself and the setbacks. So it can only improve the neighborhood. I know there's a letter on file, which you probably have, but I think that letter is more in response to all the construction going on on Angola, one of which is my client, and everything going on down at the other end on North Mill. But we have nothing to do with that because we in an existing structure, and all we're doing is improving it and changing the use to a permitted use by right. I was just verifying, I am not on the abutters list, although I am across the street from somebody that is on the abutters list, but I am not. Well, then you're outside the 300, which is good. Just outside, I'm on the other side of the street of 25B. Yeah. Fine.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members? I, I think, I think Linda signed it up rather well, that, I mean, this is, you know, we're, she's here because it's a change of use on a pre-existing non-conforming structure, a pre-existing non-conforming lot, but to an, to an allowed use.
And that little slight increase in, in the left side.
And it's going up.
Yep.
Billy, do we have a, or I should say, any other, any members of the public wish to speak on this matter? Anybody on Zoom?
We don't currently have any hands raised.
Okay, cool. Okay, any other comments or questions from the board at this point?
Normal conditions, Mr. Chairman, are HGC approval and, um, the site plan exhibit A. No timing issues on this one?
I was gonna say, do you want to, uh, fix your construction?
I think so, just because of the. Yep. There's actually no place for anybody to park during construction.
Mr. Chair, I did, I included suggested conditions in the staff report.
No, here we go, I have it here.
Indeed, okay. Yep, there we go, okay. Okay, uh, not hearing any other comments from the board, yep, here.
Sorry, um, the picture, sorry, uh, the picture showing the front, um, parking, where it's sort of a turnoff parking, where it's a mixture of concrete and, or maybe old concrete, new concrete, is that getting replaced?
I was gonna do something nicer, like, uh, you know, a skirt or something like that.
Like Belgian block or something?
Probably not Belgian block, because I believe they're probably gonna want brick. So I'll have, we haven't gone for the hardscape yet, back to the planning, back to the HGC yet.
It's like black top, it's like, uh, asphalt mixed with old and new.
Yeah, it's great.
Just curious, I guess, more than anything.
I don't want it to look like that.
Oh, good.
I have to go back to the HGC for that one, so. Some of that ugly stuff is in the road, is actually the road layout that you can't change. I'd have to ask, go to the DPW and get a license to fix that. Yeah, yeah, the line is, I think, the red stuff, like the.
Oh, we can look at the.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Yeah, but maybe with permission, they'll let you do something nicer. Yeah.
One would hope.
That's the whole point of it.
Okay, any other comments from board members? Uh, if not, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, second.
Motion made by Lisa, seconded by Lisa, we'll do a roll, roll. A motion made by Lisa, seconded by Lisa, we'll do a roll, roll call vote. Uh, Lisa Botticelli?
Aye.
Elisa Allen?
Aye.
Joe Marklinger?
Aye.
Jim Munden?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Okay, uh, public hearing is closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Uh, go ahead, Elisa.
Um, motion to approve, as is.
With, with the
First staff comment?
Per staff's recommendations?
Okay.
Findings and conditions.
Findings and conditions.
And the staff report.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none. Let's do roll call vote. Uh, Elisa Allen?
Aye.
Lisa Botticelli?
Aye.
Joe Marklinger?
Aye.
Jim Munden?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well.
Who seconded?
Uh, Lisa did.
Okay.
Okay.
Made the motion. I seconded, I think.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much.
Anything will be an improvement.
You're not on this one? Oh. Yeah, that's right.
Oh, can I grab my laptop back?
Oh, yeah.
You're not leaving, you're just going I know, it's, it's much warmer up there, okay. Does the morgue get this building? Um, so, uh, thirty, application 30-24, 16 Williams LLC, 16 Williams Street. Do we wanna take this one at the same time as
As 18?
Yeah, discuss them both.
I think it would make sense to discuss both and just do two separate motions.
Okay, agreed. Okay, so, uh, so we're gonna, uh, 30-24, 16 Williams LLC, 16 Williams Street, and 3124, Greenstick LLC, 18 William Street, both presented, uh, by Paul Santos. You have the floor?
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Paul Santos, with Nantucket Surveyors, on behalf of the properties at 16 and 18 William Street, which are currently held by two separate entities, 16 Williams LLC and Greenstick LLC. This is an application in which we are seeking a special permit to reduce the required 10-foot side yard setbacks to 5 feet for lots 1, 2, and 3, as shown on Plan 2024-34, which is being displayed on the screen at this point. Properties are located at 16 and 18 William Street. They are located in the R5 zoning district, and the relief is requested pursuant to 13916C1 of the zoning bylaw. Uh, this is a piece of property that is being developed essentially to create year-round housing. Um, the property itself is currently zoned R5, as I, as I had stated. It was, up until 2023 Annual Town Meeting, zoned as R1. The specific section of the bylaw I referenced and we are seeking, um, a special permit from states the following. Notwithstanding the provisions of Section 13916C4, the Board of Appeals may grant a special permit to reduce the 10-foot side yard setback in the R5, and the 10-foot side yard setback in backyard, in the R10, R20, and SR20 to 5 feet. Specifically, we're in the R5. R5 zoning sets, setback is, provision is you have a side yard setback of 5 foot on one side and 10 foot on the other. So, you have a, um, option of where you define the 5 and where you define the 10. What we're before you to do is to, uh, develop these three properties, each with a primary and secondary dwelling, and the relief we're looking for is specific to the two interior lot lines, if you will. So, the setback special permit we're asking for to go from 10 to 5 would occur on the two property lines that encompass the entire area, or they would be abutting properties that we control. Um, so the property to the far west, uh, we would maintain the 5-foot setback. Uh, that's the Roman Catholic Bishop of Fall River. Um, it's the hall there, located between Cherry and William Street. And then the property, the far property to the west is the Seneschal property, uh, that we would be maintaining the 5-foot setback, which we are allowed to do on each of those. The relief we're seeking is on the interior, if you will, of this particular, um, property. Um, the section that I mentioned, 13916C4, um, does allow this reduction to be made without coming before this board in certain instances. Um, that relates to, uh, setbacks for secondary dwellings that are located within 20 feet of a rear lot line. It relates to sheds, and it also relates to the fact that if you can provide common driveways to properties, um, you can relieve, or you don't, you have to meet the 10-foot, um, setback also. As I had mentioned, these are being, this property was purchased with the intent of providing, um, year-round housing. And year-round housing in a manner, um, if you will, uh, that's not an adormitory. Um, it's set up for professionals. Right now, we're in discussion, or the owner is in discussion with the hospital to provide housing for, uh, doctors, traveling nurses, and the such. Um, it could be used for any number of, um, the school system, or any other number of, um, owners or public entities that are seeking, um, to provide a quality housing, if you will, um, uh, in this particular area. You have a primary dwelling, you have a secondary dwelling, which is quite modest. Secondary dwellings are only around less than 500 square feet. Uh, they're one-story structures. Uh, the proposed dwellings, uh, vary from anywhere from 1,000, 1,200, uh, 986 square feet for the primary dwellings, um, on these properties. The staff himself has, um, supported the application. We have committed, um, to deed restricting and restricting these properties to no short-term rentals also. Um, so there, that, it would be the goal here is to, um, is, we've agreed to that restriction. Ground cover on the properties, just to, as to say that, you know, the reason we're doing this is not to, uh, overburden the properties, um, of the three properties. The allowable ground cover is 40 percent. We're proposing 32 percent, 32.1 on one of the properties, 33.7 on another of the property, and 29.4 on the third. I would submit that, uh, based on the staff's recommendation, um, I believe that, with the intent of what we're trying to do here, the fact that we're, the areas that we're seeking relief are essentially within areas that we control. Under the provisions of the, uh, Section 30, it says, "The special permit granting authority shall issue a special permit for structures and uses which are in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter, subject to the provisions of this chapter. In such permits may impose conditions, safeguards, and limitations intended to ensure that the use of structure is in harmony with the general provision or intent of this, this chapter." Um, I feel in this particular case, we've met the burden of each of those criteria, and I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, that the board, um, may have.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, Lisa.
Um, has this, um, have you designed the buildings and has it gone to the HDC?
All three of these, all six of these structures have been to the HDC, uh, and been approved.
Okay, we don't have that in the file, do we?
No, I didn't submit that.
And, and is the intent of the larger structure at 1,123 square feet of ground cover, are they two stories?
Yes, the, the primary, the, the primary dwellings are two stories. The secondary dwellings are single.
Right, so is the intent that there will be one person in that dwelling, or will there be multiple people?
Well, I think that they're set up as, they're not set up as multiple kitchens. I mean
Right, no, no, I know that, but
Yeah, so it could be, uh, I mean, it could be a family, but in some cases, you know, we did a similar project, um, over off of Meadow, Meadow Drive, or Meadowview Drive. They do have traveling nurses come in, so it may be a case where, um, you know, you may have, uh, traveling nurses utilizing the bedrooms as opposed to a, a, a family.
Right, and they wouldn't necessarily have, I mean, my only, the only reason I'm asking the question is because, you know, there's not a lot of parking. Um, but presumably, a lot of these seasonal employees wouldn't be with vehicles.
No, I'm actually looking at the parking with them, because I'm, I'm, I picked it up kind of after the designs were done, um, so I'm kind of working with them on the parking cases too, because I've, I've gotta get, go in and get the secondary dwelling approvals before the planning board, which I haven't done yet.
And have enough parking. How many parking spaces?
They're showing two parking spaces per
How many are required? For a lot, per lot?
Oh, God, I'm gonna, the tertiary is gonna require the one, and then the other, others are gonna be dependent on bedrooms, the, the number of bedrooms per the, for the dwelling.
So
Billy, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to put in there that I, I added language in the conditions here. For the, the dwellings shall be limited to year-round seasonal or employee occupancy, which is sort of standard language that the planning board has used to, to, uh, you know, because if you restrict it to, like Paul was saying, if you restrict it to year-round only, it does hamper certain outfits' ability to bring in temporary people who may be brought in seasonally, or however it's done.
Yeah, I saw that. I would just change the wording maybe to say, "Shall be limited to year-round or seasonal employee residency."
Yeah.
Because it sort of feels like year-round, comma, seasonal, seasonal or employee occupancy. It, it, it allows there to be seasonal rentals, not short-term, but, so I just think the wording might need to be a little bit more specific.
Yeah, I know. The client's initial concern with the short-term rental was that, would they consider us traveling nurses short, so we just wanted to make sure that that wasn't the case.
Yeah, no, I don't, yeah, no.
Madam Chair. So, seasonal employees or employee occupancy?
Year-round or seasonal employee residency or occupancy.
I'm gonna just add the word employee to seasonal there as well, and I think that would cover it, correct?
Yeah, that would eliminate it being just rented for three months to somebody that wants to come and have a pied-à-terre on Cherry Street for the summer.
Hold on, I think Elisa had a question first, Jim.
But we keep referring to "we," and this is privately owned, right? This is
This is correct.
It's privately owned. This isn't owned by a town, or a hospital, or a business?
That's correct.
Okay. And it's a single, each is a single-family dwelling with a second dwelling guesthouse on it?
Correct.
And okay, so, and any restrictions that we're talking about putting on it with all of these, um, who's in there, employees, employees of who? I don't even know why that matters. Um, or, you know, how, again, this is going back to a familiar topic, or whether they're living there, you know, 30 days, or 28 days, short-term rental, long-term rental. Um, why do, why do we even need to know this? Why do we, why is this relevant?
Because we're, they're asking for a change in the setback, so they're asking for a relief.
Right, but, but, and is that transferable if these properties are sold?
It's allowed in the zoning districts to go from 10 to 5.
Right.
Correct.
With, via special permit.
I wanna piggyback on
Okay.
Elisa's comments on this, because I, I have concerns about these restrictions. What is year-round?
I guess I'm, I'm just
Because there's two people talking, so
So, I guess my question, Paul, is, um, why are we, like, getting all this outside information when you're really just asking for a change, for us to make a change in the setback, when I don't really care who's gonna be in it, or if it's gonna get sold, or how are we even gonna know who's, uh, sing, year-round, a nurse, an employee of who, whatever we're talking about?
Okay, and I, I agree with you. So, I'm the one who prepared the application, and I put, I mean, working with the person that I know is developing the property, I know what their goal is or was, so I thought it was important to put it in the application. As soon as I put it in the application, you know, Billy said, "Well, you know, you're bringing it up in the application," and I agree with what you're saying. It's really not pertinent.
Okay.
It's a, the special permit has nothing to do with it.
I'm like, am I missing something?
I thought it was an important aspect of what my client is trying to do.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. And, and, but to the end
There's no way controlling it, so it doesn't matter to me.
The fact that he's willing to, to not do it to short-term rentals, I think the discussion was paused. You got something out of it.
I think you, you might be able to put a restrict, restriction in to say not, uh, no short-term rentals and define that.
No, that's what we're, and, yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's the positive that might have come out, that me trying to
There's just the enforceability issue.
Even in a, in a instance of a sale?
Yeah.
Uh-huh. And, and, wait, why do you need five more feet on either side? Why do you need 10 feet just to get the structures further apart? Because you're not maxing out the ground cover on each lot, right?
It's just the way they, they, way they laid it out, the, the layout of the structure, the layout of the smaller secondary dwelling. I think, I think they felt it was a, between the HDC and the architects, they felt it was something that worked.
Seems awfully tight to me.
Well, it seems like you need it for the exterior stairs.
Right, with the current design.
Yeah. But at least, at least, the, at least on this first lot, that's, um, closest to Mr. Senecal, at least the actual structure is, like, eight feet away from the property line, the exterior stairs within that setback.
But if there weren't exterior stairs, then they're, they're obviously putting exterior stairs so there can be legal living space in the basement. Is that true?
Well, you don't need it for legal living space, unless it's a separate dwelling. I mean, if you have a bedroom downstairs, you can egress through a windowwell. You don't need the stairs. I don't know why
Okay, so why, maybe we just don't put the stairs on there, and then you don't need relief?
Well, they, they would still need relief in this upper corner.
Yeah. I'm allowed to go to five-foot setback on that property either way.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any problem with, you know, giving the relief. I think, um, and I appreciate that his intent is to provide, um, employee housing, um, and to restrict it to no short-term rentals. I mean, I think that's admirable.
I agree. I think it's admirable, but I think that it shouldn't be there's no
Way to police.
You're allowed to ask for this reduction without that, so I think that we should look at the reduction of the setback outside of the intent to support critical community needs, because there's no, it's not like it's in our code that you get certain relief for supporting critical community needs, right? Like, if, if it was, like, something that had teeth to it, then, then I think, I mean, I'm not opposed to it. I, I don't have a problem with it. I think we've, uh, we do this in R5 a couple of times a year, yeah, so
I mean, like, if
and especially since it's on the interior, uh, lot lines, it's, it's
But if he's offering up no short-term rental
Oh, yeah, no, I think we can put that in there. I just think
That's, to me, not a bargaining chip.
Right, because even if he's in a long-term lease with, you know, the hospital, whatever, then, say that ends in 10 years, five years, or it goes sour, then, you know
Right.
he could turn around and sell.
Like the young man that was in, in here before, if he said, "Okay, this second dwelling, we're never gonna rent it out," that's not a bargaining chip, you know, with the 18-inch
But I think we're getting off topic, so I think we just need to focus on, like you said, the, it's, that's great. It's lovely that they're, that's their plan. Great that they've offered up the short-term rentals, um, are prohibited, perfect. But do we think that this is an area where, um, not an area, it's allowed in this area to ask for it, but do we think that this specific project warrants the reduction 10 to 5? That's the question.
Okay.
Um, I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, the landing, is that not an encroachment, or your, uh, the proposed landing on the secondary dwelling?
Under the current definition of structures now, there are certain provisions which landing steps, uh, can be in the setback.
Okay, and then, uh, it's interesting, so you can decide which, which is side is your front and which is your back, right?
On a corner lot or a lot border around two streets, you can define which is front and which is side, correct?
And are they gonna
In this particular zone.
Are they gonna be the same front? Both properties choose the same?
I have, I think, the way it's laid out, the front is always on William Street.
Okay.
And the, we're considering where the smaller secondary dwelling is, is the rear. Uh, not really the rear, but that's what we're defining.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone, um, online who has anything to say for this one? Not at this time, thank you. And is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment on this application, or either of the 18 or, uh, 16 Williams or 18 Williams? It does not seem that way. Okay. Does anyone have any further questions for Mr. Santos? No. Okay, so let's, would someone make a motion then to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Lisa makes that motion. Lisa, and Lisa made the motion, Elisa seconded, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so let's, I think we can craft a motion that goes, that we can use on both, and we'll vote on one first and the second one.
And I have the, the finding again listed in the staff report there, but you may want to change the conditions.
Okay. Do we want to add the condition, you know, constructed in accordance with the HTC certificate of appropriateness, and the, whatever the numbers are?
Yeah.
And, okay, so I, I would, yeah, okay, so let's add that in there. So the, so for the motion, the finding would be that granting the proposed relief pursuant to bylaw section 13916C1 is consistent with the finding that the reduction in setbacks from, to five feet for lots one, two, and three is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing conform, conforming setback requirement and is within the spirit and intent of the bylaw. And the conditions would be the project shall be completed in substantial compliance with the plan shown upon exhibit A, constructed in substantial compliance with certificate of appropriateness, numbers XYZ. Should we take a break? Do you need a minute, Joe? Okay. Okay, well, that's good. We're glad you're not, we're glad, we're glad, we're glad you're still with us. Okay. And then, dwellings shall be limited to year-round seasonal employees or employee occupancy, short-term rentals shall be prohibited, and there shall be no further alterations or reductions within the setbacks without further relief from this board. Is that, anyone have any additions or changes?
Nope.
No. Okay, so I think voting on this will be Lisa, Alisa, Joe, Michael, and myself. So do we want to take, can we vote them both together? Or we want to do?
No, we should.
Do two separate.
Okay, so the, so the lots, so lot, sorry, let me just make sure I have the right application with the right lot. So lot, lot three is 18?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or is it, or is it lot one and two are 16, and lot two and three? Sorry.
It's on the, let me go to the.
Lots two and three are 16.
Yeah.
And?
16 William Street for lots one, two, and three, as depicted, didn't we go through this, Billy, and how we, oh, it's right here.
It's right.
So 16 William Street is?
Two and three, right?
There's lot three and a portion of two.
Okay, okay. Lot three.
Oh, I see, you have to do it, that's why you have to do it.
Yes.
Okay. I got it.
Okay, so 16 is three and a portion of two, 18 is one and a portion of two.
That's right.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so the first motion would be that finding for reduction in the setback from five feet for lots three and a portion of two.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so Lisa makes the motion. Can I have a second?
I'll say.
Ooh, I'm going to give that, Michael, is that you? Okay, all right, so we'll vote on that one first, so Lisa.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Alisa.
No.
And myself, aye. Okay. And then 18 Williams Street, application 3124, would be the same motion, but it would be in regards, in respects to lots one and a portion of two. So.
I'll make that motion again.
Okay, Michael, do you want a second again? Okay, then we'll do roll call again. Lisa.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Alisa.
No.
Joe.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't wish anybody who has here happy holidays or anything, we're not going to see anyone until January, so. Paul Santos, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, you're the first one, I forgot all about it. We'll see you in the new year. Okay, so next up, we have 3224 Carl E. Nelson and Karen L. Nelson, 21, sorry, 21 Wigwam Road. Arthur Reed's office is presenting us, Arthur on?
Promoting Arthur right now, and, and Roliya does have to leave us at four, so feel free to go, Roliya.
Okay. Okay. Yes, what?
No one's coming in here after this. I know Charles had to run over the trailer for ConCon, but we have a member of NCT with, NCTB with us. I would love to get through the entire agenda, but it's totally, whatever you guys can handle, let's do it.
Let's just keep moving, okay. I see Arthur Reed on the Zoom, so Arthur, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. That, Billy, I'd appreciate it if you could also put on as a panelist my client, actually the architect for my client, Lucas Valerian, who should be waiting on Zoom as well.
Yeah, I'm moving him over now.
Okay, good, thank you. I represent the owners of this property, and briefly, because I know you're trying to get through the agenda, here's the situation, it's laid out also in the staff report. My clients own a property containing a little over 50,000 square feet in the Lug 3 district. It's one of the many grandfathered lots in the, in the Russell's Way subdivision that are, that are all grandfathered. And in the Lug 3 district, a non-conforming lot containing at least 40,000 square feet is allowed 2,000 square feet of ground cover. Present time, upon the site, the existing house and garage contain a total of 1,265 square feet. So they have 235 square feet, I'm sorry, the two, the total of the two together is 1,508, 1,265 for the house, and now it's for the garage for a total of 1,508 square feet. They're allowed 2,000, so they have 492 to square. They have the opportunity to move to their site from the property at 30 Russell's Way, a dwelling which the HTC has already approved for demolition or removal, which would add 602 square feet. There are certain additions on that house that would be removed, but the portion that would be moved to the site would be 602 square feet. That would result in the total ground cover being 2,110 square feet, 110 square feet more than is permitted under the 2,000 square foot rule. Obviously, the point on this is that otherwise, the structure in question would wind up being demolished. The, as, as Lucas will be able to confirm, because he has been the one working on this, the applicant has attempted to determine whether there would be any other use off-site, I mean, whether any other owner would be able to take the, the structure for use in another part of the island or another lot, and then no ability to find any other potential recipient for the house. It will wind up being demolished because of plans for construction on that other lot, unless it can be moved to this site. And therefore, rather than have a perfectly sound structure going off to the dump, we're asking for a variance in order to allow the additional 110 square feet that would be in excess of the amount permitted here to be allowed in connection with this relocation. As suggested in the staff report, the unique circumstances here related to the house and the fact that it would otherwise wind up being demolished gives justification for the granting of the variance under these circumstances, and we would ask that you do so. Obviously, Lucas can confirm any of this history that you would like, and obviously, he and I can answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Reed?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Mandani?
Just a procedural question. What's the effect of the planning board's approval, Arthur? How does that fit in with ours?
Simply, you need your attention.
They, they approve locating it?
Pro.
Can't hear.
We can't hear.
We lost you.
We have HTC approval.
Yeah, Arthur, you're, you're going out, in and out there, but I, I can also take a shot at this. The planning board, secondary dwellings, tertiary dwellings, they are, they require approval from the planning board, but they're non-public hearing items, and they have to meet certain criteria. For instance, there has to be a 20% difference in size, there has to be a minimum of a 10-foot scale or separation, and then you have to provide adequate parking on the site. So those are basically the three criteria that have to be met for the planning board to approve a secondary dwelling.
And the ability for a motor truck to get in.
Yeah, it's part of, I mean, when you, when you go for a secondary dwelling, the driveway access standards have to be applied to every site plan, or, or they're waived, you know, pursuant to a, to a special permit.
So regardless of whether something is moved on it or not, does this planning board approval grant them the ability to?
No, no, all it does is authorize this, this, this property to have a secondary, a second dwelling, but zoning, the zoning board would need to approve this variance in order for this to go through.
Okay, gotcha.
So. Alisa?
Sorry. So just to be clear, at the moment, the pool does not exist, the open-air cabana does not exist, the spa does not exist. Is that right?
And the guesthouse doesn't exist.
And, well, and the guest, guesthouse doesn't exist. It's around the corner, but they, they do not exist right now, is that right, Arthur?
I'll ask Lucas to speak to exactly what exists at the present time on the ground, because he's the one that's been visibly working on the site.
So there's an, there is an existing, it says car, maybe structure?
That's a garage, 243.
That's, that's the existing garage.
Yep.
Hi there, can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Lucas. I work with Chip Webster, and we're the architects for the property. To address your question, currently, all the structures you just mentioned do exist. There is a new HTC-approved and built pool, cabana, hardscaping, and the garage was already built some time ago.
And the storage next to the existing garage?
Correct.
Okay.
Is the storage included in the 243 square foot?
No, it looks like it's open.
Correct. Yeah, it's a, it's a lattice structure.
Okay, and the cabana does not count a ground cover?
That's correct, the cabana is open air on all four sides.
I'm just curious, so does the cabana have foundation under it?
Cabana has footings under the columns.
That's it, no, no, no basement, crossbase, nothing?
No, no.
It'll just be patio underneath?
That's correct, the hardscaping around the pool just extends under the cabana, there's a grill, a little outdoor bar, all open air.
I'm just wondering if there's somewhere on the property that we could eliminate 110 square feet, and then you're clear.
I know.
Doesn't look like it, I think that's, I think that's.
You know, because we have all these other pieces of the puzzle, isn't there some that aren't like?
Nothing counts as ground cover, though.
Yeah.
I know.
So, what I was gonna, I, you know, typically, that the zoning board doesn't love to increase over the allowed ground cover. The, the difference here, obviously in the application, and I just, I wonder how we all feel, because again, it's a, more of a feel-good thing for the community versus a, I believe, documented in our bylaw, that if you move something that already exists and you're solving or reusing a structure, that you get a, a break on the ground cover. You know, there's nothing, there's not, there's nothing we can, there's not a specific section we could tie it to, but I do, for the sake of 110 square feet, saving a structure that would otherwise be demolished, there's some value to that, I think.
Yeah, I agree, I don't disagree, I'm curious if there's any pictures of this house that's going to be relocated, and maybe there's a small mass that could be taken off, so it can pop.
I can share a screen if that's allowable.
Yes, that'd be great.
Thank you.
All right, let me know if you guys see this PDF now.
Yes, thank you.
So this was our HTC submission. So you can see on the left-hand side where I'm circling is the existing house, it was built as a spec house in the 70s, and we actually are already proposing to remove this wing. You can see, I'm gonna zoom in here, it dashed in red.
Sorry, Lucas, that's the building that's becoming the guesthouse?
This is the building that's becoming the guesthouse, that's correct.
Okay.
So there's two photos of it in this PDF here, you see the front of it up here, and then the rear of it. In order to move it, number one, we were told that this portion of it that's dashed in red would have to be removed, and to get us closer to the allowable ground cover, we're imagining just removing that permanently. So then you're left with a pretty straight rectangular structure.
And is the second-floor deck included in the move?
The second-floor deck will be removed.
Okay.
It'll be removed for the demolition.
And then will be rebuilt?
Right now, the client doesn't know exactly how they want to reprogram it. That deck will be facing ins, interior to the pool side of the property. We would imagine, right now, that this is programmed where there's bedrooms on the first floor, we'd imagine they would want to, to flip that, so I would, I would, I would, I would imagine the client would not want to put back the deck in its entirety. Perhaps they would be interested in some portion of it being put back, but right now, this is just about moving it, saving it, and then down the line, when money allows, coming back and, and, and programming it fully.
And Lucas, do you have HTC approval for where this building is going and what it's going to look like without that deck and everything?
So we have HTC approval to relocate that structure, this is the site plan with the structure indicated, the deck is facing inside to the pool. Right now, the HTC approval is to just patch those areas that were, were damaged from the removal of that wing, and then come, you know, with the understanding that at some later time, any fenestration changes that we would like to do, we would have to come back for a separate application. So the HTC approval is just to move as-is with the removal of that little wing portion and the deck, and then patching like-kind shingles to weather-proof it again.
Okay, so we could condition it tied to that COA.
That they don't have yet.
Well, they have, or whatever the, the, whatever they, whatever the COA is, and then they.
Even though the deck doesn't count as ground cover, it still could be, you know,
but it's not, right, but it's not approved with a deck right now.
Well, they didn't, they didn't put any elevations in.
But they're going back in to ask for.
Right, exactly, right, they're gonna have to go back in, so they'd have to.
I think that the corse of the question is, is are we comfortable, you know, irrespective what it looks like, because that's not our jurisdiction, are we comfortable granting a variance? And does this relocation of the building allow us to be more creative with the interpretation of variance relief?
So, yeah.
Can I say one little thing? It's an LUG 3, so, what's that, 3%?
It's two, uh.
It's only 2%, because it's undersized.
So you'd be, what, 3,600?
No, 2,000.
2,400?
2,000.
No, I said, I know, it says 2,000, no, but the district's in.
Oh, it's simple.
You're allowed 2,000.
20, it's 3% ground cover?
Apart from 3%, you're allowed, in general, allowed a minimum of 1,500.
You're gonna, in the district it's in, and you're only gonna end up with 2,100?
Yeah, because you don't have the land, though. You only have 50,000 square feet.
Yeah, it's...
No, but that's the district it's in.
Yeah, but it's an undersized lot, so it doesn't get the same...
Yeah, no, I understand that.
Yeah, it doesn't apply.
I don't know.
But maybe that's how you get to the variance, because it's the undersized lot, and it's in this district.
What is the actual percentage over that it's gonna be? If it's 110, it's 5% over?
Yeah, just over 0.05%.
0.05.
I'd feel better if that second-floor deck was not recreated. That, to me...
I don't have a problem with that.
I don't have a problem with the deck.
I think the HTC will take care of that, I feel like.
It's gonna look so much better with it.
With the deck, yeah, it'll look weird.
I mean, that is just, it's not a super attractive building, frankly, so...
No, very tall.
It's very tall, and looks almost taller than the house, but that's not our jurisdiction.
Do we, so do we have anyone else?
I'm trying to think of a way to trade some, something on, massing something on the property that may not count as ground cover, but still feels like ground cover, since they want ground cover.
Well, I mean, I don't think we can take, there's really nothing we can take away.
That's what I'm trying to think of.
I think we could, if there was like, we could say that they don't, I mean, I don't see a shed on here. We could say they give up the zoning shed. We've done that in the past.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
Okay.
I think that's a very good idea.
Madam Chair, I know we're, you brought this up, but we're... I can't see a shoehorning this into this variance definition, but I mean, who's experiencing the hardship on the demolition of the, if it gets demolished?
Well, the environment and our landfill.
So this is basically a special exception.
It's, right, that's what I was saying. Like, can we, can we find, it's not, it's not in our bylaw, but can we, as a feel-good thing for the, in the community, that you're reusing, recycling?
That's one scenario.
Yeah.
Say someone else moved it to their property.
Well, so I think then we need to differentiate that this is a de minimis, they're in a lug 3. If they were on, if it was an R5 lot, I think 110 square feet is a lot bigger of a deal. So it's, it's, do we think it's de minimis in this zoning district?
I do.
I do, too, without them being allowed to have yet another little teeny building, because they're sprinkled all over the place.
They could have made 100-square-foot error in calculating the existing ground cover.
Maybe.
Well, do we know that they went to the corner boards?
Maybe they want to get it resurveyed, but right now...
So...
No, 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 I'm just saying, it's a possibility that that could have happened. I'm not saying that they need to get it resurveyed.
Okay, so does anyone have any more questions for Arthur? Can we close the public hearing?
Is there anyone in the neighbors that has a...
I don't, I don't think we have any...
I didn't receive any correspondence on this of any kind. That being said, and I just have to throw it out there, the mail has been atrocious lately. I mean, I've been experiencing it a lot at planning board.
You mean getting a lot of mail?
Planning board, a lot of people are not getting a butter's notifications, and I mean, we're sending them out. For instance, one went out for the November 14 meeting. We got postmarked November 22. As staff, I wouldn't even send out a letter if I was that far behind.
Okay, well, duly noted, but that's the requirement. So we just, we can't, so...
It's unfortunate, it is what it is. I hate to say that.
Well, and it doesn't look like where it's being placed is gonna be really, just looking at the GIS, it's not like it's right on top of anybody, so... Not that I'm speaking for any neighbors or would ever think to do so, but...
If I may, through the board?
Yep.
I do know that this particular client's good friends with all of their neighbors, so I don't, I know that none of them would be objecting. I also know you had thrown out the shed compromise. That's something they would certainly be open to. I don't know if that's doable, but foregoing any future exempt shed.
I think that is a good compromise.
Yeah.
I agree.
I think you gotta look at it as, would we forget about moving this structure if you would approve it at just building new?
No. Absolutely not.
Then you, then you're opening the door up for people to move structures on and get around this, because this special exception.
Yeah, that's a good point.
That's a very good point.
I think, I think that is, that's what we, yeah, that's the crux of it. Like, we have to think, because this is a move on, and because it's a reuse recycle, is that social benefit enough to satisfy a variance?
But does it open the door to...
I don't know. How important, how important is it to save structures from the '70s?
I think it's a pretty nice structure. I would think other people...
I think nobody else wanted it.
I think to move it, though, it's good, because it's so tall. I think you'd have to cut it...
Yeah, I think that was...
You could use it for affordable housing.
Wait, 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 sorry. Do we want to close the public hearing, or do we want to continue to have Mr. Vale, and, sorry if I mispronounce your name, and Arthur involved in the conversation?
I have another question for the architect.
Okay, one more question for the architect, and then we'll decide on closing the public hearing.
Hi. I'm wondering, when the new structure gets moved to the new lot, or the old structure gets moved to the new lot, are they gutting it? Are they reshingling it? Are they putting a new roof on it? What was, what's the scope of renovation to this prop, this structure?
That's a good question. So, right now, the roof will certainly need to be reshingled. I would imagine it's, you know, original asphalt shingling.
Is it getting all new windows, new doors?
No, those are in good enough shape. They will not be, it will not be a gut, and it will not be all new windows and doors. I would imagine most of that should be salvageable. The existing house on that lot was built in around the same time, probably around the '80s. So I don't think it's any sense to, you know, overbuild this new guest house. I think they would pair well with, you know...
You see what I'm getting at, though? If they were just gonna completely gut it and leave a shell, and just leave up a few 2x4s?
No, I appreciate that. No, I would say the exterior framing, the chimney, the windows will all be remaining. The shingles will probably have to be replaced.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may, one last point. I know you were, somebody was mentioning the opportunities to move this off-site. I'll just talk quickly about that. We did tie pretty extensively. Obviously, it has to be advertised through HTC, which we did. But then we also reached out directly to Housing Nantucket. We did have a lot of interest in this particular structure. When they came down and looked at the feasibility of getting it out of this neighborhood, however, it was just determined that road, if you're familiar with it, it's a very long, skinny dirt road with tight pines. We'd have to segment the house, and by that time, it just became financially undoable. So we were just restricted to moving this in the neighborhood or demoing it. But we tried through a couple avenues, Housing Nantucket being one of them, to have this property moved elsewhere on the island.
I just have one point that, and I know you haven't gotten HTC approval for it, but you're gonna have to put a deck up there if you're keeping the doors up on the second floor. I mean, you can't just cut the deck off and leave the door. So there's gonna be fenestration changes if the deck is being removed.
That's what I was thinking earlier. There'd be windows.
Yeah, exactly. So there will be significant, or not significant, but there will have to be changes to the fenestration. Unless the deck is being put back, then maybe not. So it's, we don't have a clear picture of what they're gonna do with it, and it doesn't sound like they have a clear picture of what they're gonna do with it yet. They're just getting the building at this point, I think.
So I think, I mean, the way I'm, I'm just, I'm really trying to focus on the 110...
Square feet, yeah.
Can we restrict this year-round housing for no short-term rental?
I don't think we can do year-round housing, but I think we could do, no short-term rentals.
I'm not suggesting that.
Oh, you're kidding?
Well, I, yeah. We see, yeah.
What it says, structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district it's in. I don't think this affects the zoning district, the extra 110 square feet. It's in LUG3. I mean, I don't think it has any detrimental...
Well, I think...
I mean, you can't change the, the zoning is not, I don't know how this got built, was it a special permit or something?
No, I think it was rezoned at some point. The lots were smaller, probably got zoned to LUG3, or the lot existed.
So they got screwed out of their 1,600 square feet?
Okay, let's close, let's, let's close...
Just a question. So all those, really, everyone in that neighborhood has a similar restriction or underside?
I'm gonna look, probably. Yeah, they all look small, if you look at the GIS map. So that's the question, you know? Yeah, we have to be really specific about it being, because this building is being relocated, as opposed to, well, you know, just because you're a lug 3 and you happen to have an undersized lot, you can get extra ground cover, even if you're building new.
Right.
That is the problem.
Well, no, I mean, you can't, you can't get it if you're building new, but the fact that this building already exists in the neighborhood, but you do bring up a good point, because if we allow this to move here, obviously, the property value for this guy is gonna go up, right? And then none of his neighbors can get that same... They're not gonna be able to get that same thing. So is, are we creating a hardship or inequity for the rest of the neighborhood?
I mean, this is a big building, too. I mean, let's be honest. It's 600 square feet on the ground, but it's two store, a full two stories. It's 1,200 square feet. It's not, you know, moving your grandmother's, you know, one-story cottage over.
Right.
So that's, I think, I think they're, I mean, I, you know, I don't know. I'm very torn, because I obviously don't want to see things go to the dump, but I do think it does open the door for lots of questions with everybody else, you know? I don't know how, you know, people are...
Right, like, did all these neighbors know that that lot, that that property, that the structure, rather, was available? Did anybody else bid to get it? Like, I don't know. I agree, I'm torn, because I see the, I see the good in the, in it being a good deed. I don't think that the 110 is too much, but, but the impact...
But giving up the zoning shed, we're taking away 200 square feet in exchange for 110. Granted, the 200 doesn't count as ground cover, but it's a negotiating tool.
It was over 200.
Over 200, okay. Okay, are we, can we close the public hearing and deliberate? Or, yeah, okay. No more questions for the architect or for... Okay, so would someone make a motion to close the public hearing?
Sue moved.
Who was that? Who was that, Jim or John? John, okay. And Alisa?
Yes.
Okay, so, let's see, who do we have? I don't know if you should vote on this. I don't know what's gonna happen. I'm gonna have Jim.
Couldn't they just cut off 100 square feet of this building? I mean...
Well, maybe if we don't allow it, they would, but...
What if they put it on the foundation? That was 110 square feet smaller?
Okay, so we still need to vote, guys. Guys, we still need to vote. So John made the motion, Alisa seconded it. So I'm gonna call your names to close the public hearing. John?
Aye.
Alisa?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Oh, that's five, myself. I didn't even vote myself, myself, aye. God. Okay. So, so what, so what do we think about this?
I don't know.
I wish that there was a, it would be easier if there was a policy from the town, right? That gave us direction.
For recycled buildings? Yeah. For what it's worth, I'm okay with this. I think it's a relatively de minimis vote. It's in lug 3. And if we restrict the, if we tell them they can't have a ground cover shed, I think that's, I think in light of all the circumstances surrounding this, I think that's a reasonable trail. I don't think we're opening the door, because it is, because there is, you know, a unique circumstance inasmuch as this is the only neighborhood that could actually take this house. Again, it's a lug 3 zone, they're undersized lots. I can, I can see myself to it.
I also, I don't necessarily, I don't know how this sets a precedent. Every variance is different based on the lot itself. In, in order for this to be a precedent, there's gonna have to be another home on Russell's Way that can't be moved.
Right, right.
Yeah, some other, some other road around there, yeah.
Good point.
I just think it should be very specific about why it's being granted, so that there is...
Yeah, for me, if I were to vote on this, the Russell Way thing is, that's enough for me. I understand now where we are and where this house is coming from, so I'm okay with that.
Okay. So does someone want to try to craft a motion, then? We have the findings. We have a suggested condition. I think we would add, we discussed adding a condition that they would be, it would be constructed in accordance with the HTC COA, as may be amended, whatever the number is, as may be amended. And there would be no zoning shed. And do we want no short-term rental?
I mean, if we start conditioning our approvals, it's just...
I wouldn't go, I wouldn't go that way.
Okay.
We're opening up.
Okay.
Is there a way that we can ensure that the structure stays the same so that they don't move it on and then basically keep the roof?
Well, they have, they'd have to go for HTC approval. And if it was gonna change and be more than the 2,100, or sorry, the 602 square feet, they'd have to come back to us.
Well, I think to Jim's point is, they don't have HTC approval, other than just moving the building right now.
Right, yeah. Right, yeah.
So at the point where they designed the building and they have, and they design multiple changes on the interior that require all the walls to be rebuilt, the roof to come off, they could change the shape of the roof. Then at what point are we saving the building?
Right.
And that's, that I think is his point.
Yeah.
And that that should be restricted because we don't have a COA to attach to this other than the relocation, nothing about the new construction. So that's the slippery slope.
Yeah, that's exactly what I mean. But are you saying we can put that?
I don't know, I don't know. Because we don't have a COA to attach.
But is there a way to say substantially in the?
Well, I mean, we don't, we, well, yeah, if we say, we don't have HDC.
Oh, we can't ask.
Right now, it has a COA to move on the site. So any deviation from that COA.
With no exterior changes to it.
Correct. So any deviation from that COA, that would result in additional ground cover and things like that.
Re-triggering massing changes on the roof.
Again, that's outside of the ZVA's purview. So it's just something that, massing changes don't come into the zoning by law.
But the reason that we're allowing them to move it is because they're saving a structure. So if you're then getting the ground cover, not saving the structure and ripping the roof off and rebuilding it, you're no longer saving the structure.
I think it's a little dangerous. I think the reason you should allow this should be owing to the shape of the lot or the structures thereon, but. And if that doesn't work for you, then you don't approve it. But I, I don't, I don't understand why we're gonna do backflips to try and get to a, a decision there. I, I think you need to, you all need to vote on what you think is.
Well, people are clever.
Oh, I just would hate to see this whole thing go to the dump, too. It's just silliness.
What, what, follow up on what Lisa's saying. What's to prevent them from bringing this on, saying, oh, the thing's rotted, and tear it down to just the floor?
Well, they'd have to come back, right? Can we, can we?
Only if they're changing.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Why couldn't we condition it that once they have a design plan for that structure, they have to come back?
Yeah, I like that.
So we have a real COA to.
But how does that, what does, and then what? If we don't like it, we say, forget it, you gotta rip it down? I don't think we can do that.
We should just follow down what's in front of us. You guys, you guys are getting way out of.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so.
Are you looking for a motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I'll make the motion of granting the proposed relief pursuant to bylaw section 13932 is consistent with finding that the land subject to the requested relief has circumstance related to the shape of the lots and the structures located thereon or to be moved thereon, but not affecting generally the lug three zoning district. A literal enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, and desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw because the prop, because the house is being moved or the structure is being moved from Russell's Way or Madison Road to a location and that this is within the, it's a de minimis ground cover overage. And I would condition that there will be no further expansion of the structures without further relief from this board and that the, there shall be no ground cover, they're not allowed to have a non-ground cover shed.
Yeah, no, yeah. And it'll be constructed in accordance with HDC.
Yes, thank you.
COA.
Yep.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so John makes the motion, Alisa seconds it, and then I'll do a roll call. John?
Aye.
Alisa?
Aye.
Lisa?
Uh, no.
Joe?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay. So guys, I, it's 4:35. What time are we supposed to be out of here?
You said it didn't matter.
Well, I texted, there's nothing after us.
I know, I hate, I know.
Although he looked like he was ready to leave.
He did. Let me just, can I just, I just wanna make sure one of my children got home, if that's okay? Because she's home alone and she. Just give me two seconds.
Take your time.
I was at a zoning board meeting once. Used to meet on Fridays. Started at 1:00, 9 o'clock at night.
Oh, yeah.
No, several. Not, not in this building. It's ridiculous. Well. I know why they stopped meeting on Fridays.
Yeah.
John, when you were the DA, were you being a war?
Mm-hmm, yeah. We've been moting for, at 1:00 forever.
Because you gotta pick a time?
Because lawyers didn't like. It was too dicey getting here. They might get stuck here for the night.
Oh.
And if they did it on a school night, it didn't matter.
We don't wanna be.
Mr. Dale was the chairman of the board at one time.
All right, let's get going. All right, so we're gonna do 27 Jefferson Avenue, 33 24, 29 Jefferson Avenue LLC. Oh, wait, is that right? Attorney Arthur Reed presenting.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. Kevin is here as a neighbor.
Okay, Attorney Reed, you, oh. Sorry. So we're doing 33, 24, 29 Jefferson LLC, 29 Jefferson Avenue. Attorney Arthur Reed presenting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And would you also promote my client who is waiting in the wings on Zoom, Laura Truffal, the owner of the property?
She's coming over now.
Great. Thank you. This is a situation in which we're applying for a special permit for the extension of a pre-existing non-conforming structure within the setback area by adding a, an air conditioning unit. This is an as-built situation. In 2021, the air conditioning unit was added into the setback area closer to the lot line than the structure to which it was being attached on the, on the property. Yes, that's a picture of it. The issue came up recently as an as-built situation with a violation notice being served upon us. As my client will indicate, she was shocked to surprised to find out that there was a violation here. The work had been done several years ago, apparently as a result of a complaint, which was made to the town and not to, and without any intent to the, to my client. The violation notice came out from the town and with a court action being attached to it. And obviously, we filed this application for special permit in order to obtain relief to legitimize the work that had been done in 2021, which is my client will indicate to me was done by contractors that were hired without any indication that there was any zoning issue coming up. And only later did that, that become identified. What we're dealing with here is an AC unit, as was shown to you a minute ago, on the rear of the structure, which, and it, it's the structure in the, in the southeasterly corner of the property, as is being pointed out to you right now, on the easterly side of that, of that structure. The standard, obviously, for alterations and extensions to pre-existing non-conforming structure is that the extension not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconformity. The cottage in question, according to the town records, they show an approximate building date of 1960. I've taken a look at the, at the aerial maps on the website, and the earliest one of those that's shown goes back to 2007 that it was shown then. Certainly, it has the status of a more than 10-year-old and almost certainly more than, older than zoning, pre-existing non-conforming structure. So it's entitled to be extended, including extension further into the setback, so long as it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing conditions. Now, in fact, as to whether there is a substantial detriment to the neighborhood, first of all, one neighbor is not the neighborhood, and the issue is, is the neighborhood in general, whether it's more substantially detrimental rather than whether any one particular neighbor may have raised an issue about it. And in fact, this is situated approximately 70 to 75 feet away from the house on the adjacent property. There's a vegetated area in between on the neighbor's property adjacent to the, the area where this is located. I believe there's been a fence and there's going to be a fence, a new fence constructed along that boundary line. It's hard to see how there's going to be any detriment to anyone in the neighborhood, how in fact the neighborhood would be detrimentally affected in any way by the approval of this existing air conditioning unit on the rear of the structure. I would like to ask my client to come on and speak as to the history of this work being done so that you can fully understand the fact that she's been proceeding in good faith throughout this procedure and give you a little bit more background as to what's going on here. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me? Good afternoon. Maybe?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, good. Hi, I'm Laura Truffal. I'm the owner of 29 Jefferson. And so regarding, I was gonna, sorry, I'm trying to see, see you all. There we go. So I bought this house in 2020, and in 2021, we put the air conditioning in. It's a little guest cottage. It's a one-bedroom guest cottage. And the construction company that helped me do this was Main Street Construction. Dwyer Maloney was my contractor, and we hired Mike Doebert from the Doebert Company for the HVAC. And it was all done in good faith. And, you know, at that time when we installed it, no one said, you know, I was in violation of violating a setback or rules. And, you know, so I didn't, I don't think it was detrimental to my neighbors behind me. So that, I mean, that's just the facts. I mean, it's been there since 2021. It had never been an issue for them. Unfortunately, last winter, my little cottage got infested with mice. And so I was forced to take out, take it down to the studs and re-insulate the guest cottage. And at that point, I had to enter the, we entered the, either side of the cottage on the north and the south back corner to re-insulate it. We didn't take it, the, we didn't do it from the inside because we would have had to destroy the bathroom. So that point was the point where we didn't go into the neighbor's property, but they, we're seeing that we were doing construction because of the mice. And at that point is where I believe my neighbors became aware of this air conditioning unit. But it wasn't, you know, nobody had ever mentioned it or said it was a problem because you couldn't even see it. And, you know, once the vegetation grows back, you'll never see it. And, you know, regarding the size of this little unit, it's only 21 inches high, 31 inches wide, and 11 inches deep. It doesn't make any noise. It's an electrical unit, doesn't emit any exhaust or sound. So I don't believe it's disturbing any of my neighbors. And, you know, as, as I said, I don't believe my neighbors were even aware of it until this unfortunate experience with my mice and having to put in foam insulation, you know? And in 21, it was all, it was not, you know, trying to harm or, you know, violate regulation.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Attorney Dale, you have.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good to see you. I represent Sandra Sheffield Delde and her children, Grace Brett Kelly and Thomas Sheffield. My client owns a budding property at 27 Jefferson Avenue and opposes this application for a special permit because it's really not necessary. And the reason it's not necessary is when the cottage on the 29 Jefferson Avenue property was renovated and reconstructed in 2010, the air conditioning unit was in front of the cottage, facing Jefferson Avenue, screened by shrubbery, and there was no zoning problem. There was no intrusion into a setback. Everything was fine. 10 years later, the unit in question, the air conditioning unit, was relocated to a very narrow rear yard setback area, 1.9 feet wide. And right now, that unit is less than five inches from my client's property line. There's a little more going on here. During the past year, the applicant built fences that encroached on my client's property, removed vegetation from my client's property along this property line at issue, and most importantly, removed a wooden fence that was along the property line. All of those things were done without my client's permission and only after some back and forth with me representing my client and talking to my brother, Counselor Reed, did we get some movement and the encroaching fences were removed. Now, my client wants to construct a wooden fence along her property line to prevent further encroachments. And if she does so as she plans, this unit's gonna be less than five inches from that fence. So it is a significant detriment to my client's property. And the reason that special permit relief is not appropriate here is, as you know, section 13933A1 of the bylaw provides for special permit relief for pre-existing non-conforming structures that are located in a setback area. This air conditioning unit is not a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Cottage is, but not the unit. So it's not available or doesn't have the right to special permit relief. And in the circumstances, it's really common sense and it's what fairness dictates, that the applicant should relocate the air conditioning unit to where it was from 2010 until 2001, perhaps put a bush in front of it so it's not visible, and stay out of the less than two-foot-wide rear yard setback. There's no, I wanna mention this, I don't wanna belabor things, you've been so patient, but I happened to go on ChatGPT today, not using them as the totally reliable source, but I said, how far from an abutting wooden fence should a freestanding outside air conditioning unit be located for safety purposes? And for safety and optimal performance, it's generally recommended to place a freestanding outside air conditioning unit at least one to three feet away from a wooden fence. Again, this one is less than five inches at its closest point. So in summary, the logical thing to do is to relocate the air conditioning unit back to where it was. There'd be no zoning violation. There's no need for a special permit. And I think that my clients have met the burden that says keeping it where it is, five inches from the property line, is more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than what was there before, a unit that caused no zoning violation in front of the cottage. So I'd ask you to deny the special permit and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I have one question. I mean, there is another place that this could go, which would be on the north side of the cottage, right next to the outdoor shower. Correct?
I agree with you. I think there are a couple places that this could go. The pictures on 16 and 17, or sorry, 17 and 18 show it in the front of the house. And I think we've had this question come up in Sconsett a few times where it is really tight quarters and we've.
We don't have to give a solution, do we?
What? No, but I'm just, no, we just have to say.
They have to move it.
Yeah.
Someplace good.
Yeah.
As much as I wanna get involved in it.
No, no, I agree. I think that we've, we've had similar issues with these exact types of air conditioners out in Sconsett where it's tight and we've not allowed.
I don't think it should be in the setback.
Madam Chair.
No, yeah.
And I also bet if you were to pull the owner's manual for that condensing unit, along the lines of what Kevin Dale just said, there's, and if you were to go to the building department, well, really just the, just the space that you need around a unit for proper intake and, and outflow, that's just not enough space for it to work properly. I don't know if it becomes a fire hazard. I don't know what, what goes on when it, when you don't follow what the manual says you need for space around, you know, a condensing unit. So I don't, especially if you're putting up a fence there, I don't think it behooves you. I don't think it's gonna work properly and it could be hazardous in some way. I, I don't know off the top of my head, but I know when you're building a brand-new house on Nantucket, you have to have condensing units a certain distance away to allow airflow. So for that reason alone, I wouldn't put it back there. So I'm not going to be approving this.
I was gonna say, my, my bigger issue is, I don't think special, I tend to agree with Mr. Dale. I don't think special permit release is appropriate. I think this is more of variance because I think it's, you know, it's, it's a freestanding structure. It's sort of freestanding. I appreciate it is attached to the house, whether it be through wires or through whatever, but even, even the site plan shows it as freestanding, separate from the cottage. So I think this would, I think it would be a variance personally.
So given the feedback we're hearing, Attorney Reed, do you, how do you, how do you?
First of all, it is attached to the house, and therefore I think it, it does qualify for the special permit relief. The section six finding, which is what this is, and in Nantucket, a section six finding requires a special permit, that it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. And that applies to any extension, whether or not it increases the nonconformity of a, of a pre-existing nonconforming structure. But I would also like to ask my client, who I believe can give some input as to why the, the unit was placed in this location, or why it's more appropriate for it to be placed to this location.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you one minute, okay?
Fine. So in 2001, when we changed the, you know, I didn't, we changed the air conditioning system and we put in central air as opposed to having a window kind of unit, is that what Mr. Dale was referring to, or Attorney Dale was referring to. And we just moved it to the back so that we wouldn't see it from the street, or it wouldn't be in my front yard, and didn't, obviously didn't think it would impede or hurt anybody. And I was relying, as I said, on these people that I hired as contractors to help me. And so, you know, putting on the side, in the front of the house, you would see it nine months of the year because the vegetation dies back. Or, and then on the, on the, I guess it's the east elevation is the property line, so you wouldn't put it there. Or then in the south and the east is the property line. And then the other option, the, you know, you wouldn't, you don't necessarily wanna put it on the side of. And then the other option, the, you know, you wouldn't, you don't necessarily want to put it on the side of the outdoor shower. So it was just, it seemed like a very logical location.
So...
And as, you know, it is attached to the house. And as I said, I don't know what the rules are for its, you know, how much space it needs. It's not a huge condensing unit, I mean, it's only 21 inches high. So it's tiny, and it's 11 inches, so...
Okay, so, so what, but you're, you're actually, I think, arguing against yourself at this point, but it was in the front yard covered by bushes. You could have bushes that are there, you know, that are, that are evergreen. You could put it on the side, it'll be, yes, it'll be closer to your house, yes, it was in your front yard, but it can't be in the setback, so that's a violation. So Billy, I see you have your hand up, but I think we should move to...
Yeah, yeah, I just, I just wanted to make one point, and this is the point of my staff report.
Under 13933 1A, the Special Permit Granting Authority finds that such extension, alteration, or change shall not be substantially more detrimental to the, than the existing non-conforming structure. Just moving forward a little bit here. The Special Permit Granting Authority may issue a special permit to allow an extension, alteration, or change to the structure, provided that the non-conforming setback distance is not made more non-conforming. We're going from 1.9 to 0.4 feet. You don't, it doesn't compute how this is not more non-conforming.
Right, so...
So I'll move to close the hearing.
Well, so what, well, I was just gonna, before we close the hearing, I was gonna give Attorney Reed again, do you, how, do you want to, you're not in the room, but I see a lot of, I, I don't think this looks favorable for you. So do you, we can move forward and vote, or...
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna let you move forward and vote, I'm not going to withdraw the application. I would make the point that contrary to what Mr. Saad indicated, the language in the bylaw about the special permit not allowing it to be more non-conforming is in contradiction of 486. And the state law controls, rather than the local bylaw. Under the, under the State Zoning Act, it is a special permit, is allowed by special permit to extend the non-conformity and make it more non-conforming, provided that the board finds it not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Now, obviously, from where you are going, you're going to find, and I think it's a wrong conclusion that could be reversed on appeal, that this is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. But I just wanted to clear up that point as to what the basic underlying state of the law is with regard to this matter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So let's, do you have anything else to say, Attorney Dale?
I just want to commend Michael O'Meara for his service to the town as this longstanding Board of Appeals member. And I also want to say Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
I just want to make one point, too. You're, you are, Mr. Dale, you are the first person to reference AI in your...
Yeah.
To this board.
That's true.
I wouldn't expect it.
I'm not too proud of that.
I think we probably can close the public hearing.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Oh, there are people on? Oh, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know why it's not, the whole reason they have this thing is so I can monitor that.
We have, we have two hands raised. Mr. Sheffield's hand was up first, and then Ms. Ewing had her hand raised.
Okay, I apologize to you, I, the whole reason I have my laptop is so that I can see that and not make that opa that I just did, but I don't see those. So I guess if you can put them forward, that would be great.
Mr. Sheffield, you'll have to unmute.
Hi, good afternoon. I just wanted to thank Billy Saad for getting us the information concerning this request for variance. As you've probably seen by what was submitted by Reed and Associates versus the truth, we were shocked but not too surprised by the disrespectful and dishonest unethical actions by our neighbor and their counsel. Coming back from last winter and finding fences, vegetation, you know, new plantings on our property, new fences erected, and then this, you know, AC unit, you know, just a couple inches from the property line. The neighbor has done nothing to make us whole here, moving some vegetation, but leaving a lot of damage in its way. And, you know, our plan is now to build a fence to shield ourselves and, and protect ourselves from further encroachment. And this unit not only makes noise, but, you know, presents a fire hazard and perhaps greater noise problem if that close to a fence, reverberating, and can hurt the integrity of the fence as well. You know, erecting fences on Nantucket is not an inexpensive process. We've been in, our family's had this house since the late 50s. We've had great neighborly relations with our neighbors down on Jefferson and Pawgovit. This neighbor is an exception. So thank you for your consideration in, in removing this noisy and unwanted article from right next to the property line. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sheffield, and there's one more person with...
Yeah, we have Victoria Ewing. Tori, you are unmuted, or you have to unmute.
Good afternoon, everybody, thank you for your time, I know it's a long day. I just wanted to give my two cents, I've been assisting Ms. Truffalay in bringing everything into compliance, and wanted to just rebut a few comments that have been made and give you some factual information regarding our process. The fence that Mr. Sheffield is referring to, and Attorney Dale referred to that was removed, was actually ownership of Ms. Truffalay's property. HCC Best Practices has confirmed that the style and direction that the fence was installed, albeit on the property line, brought ownership to Ms. Truffalay specifically. So there was no intention to remove a fence that was on the Sheffield's property.
Tori?
Yeah?
Tori?
Yeah?
I, I get it, but we're, that, that really is, we're not talking about that right now. The only thing we're talking about is the AC unit.
Yep, okay, I'll, I'll move on.
Try to limit it to that, and then...
Yeah, no problem. So that's been remedied. Another point that they brought up has been remedied, the encroaching fence. We've already met with Doebert regarding the AC unit specifically, and I want to remind you that the fence that the Sheffields are speaking of installing is currently a non-existent fence. We've already confirmed that the decibels of the unit are 19 to 21.
That doesn't matter, Tori, we're only talking about it being in the setback.
Yep, and I'm just letting you know that there's no harm in it being where it is. There's no fire concern, it's a non-combustible unit. You know, all the concerns they've raised have been satisfied and researched, and just wanted to confirm that for you.
Okay, all right, great, well, thank you. Okay. Yes, please. Okay, so motion's been made and seconded to close the public hearing. Lisa? Alisa? John?
Aye.
Myself and Joe.
Aye.
Okay. Yes, please. Yes. Okay. And because it is, it is, it's creating a new, it's creating a new non-conformity, it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Yes. Right, and there are alternatives, so it doesn't have to be in the setback, it could go back right where it was. Okay. So Lisa makes that motion. No, you, you're now a full member, right?
Well, not until Michael leaves.
I thought you, I thought you got reinstated last night. Okay, I was about, I had a note to say, congratulations on your promotion. Okay. Well, I'm, okay, Lisa, you're, you're making the motion. I already thought, I thought you were promoted already.
Do you need a second to the motion?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So, and then we'll just do roll call again. So Lisa?
Aye.
Alisa? John?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And myself, so that does not pass, or that passes and it's denied. Sorry. Okay. We have, the other is just... Oh, yes. Thank you, Attorney Dale. So our, we have three meetings on the, on the docket coming up, so we'll see, we'll see you next week at 1:00 for Surfside Crossing. Michael, thank you so much for everything.
Thank you.
Oh, my gosh, you're...
What would it be for our last meeting if we didn't torture you till 5:05?
I know, oh, my God, I was supposed to pick my kids up already.
To adjourn?
We do. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Your last vote. I'm gonna give you a hug.
John?